I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the September 25th, 2018 regular meeting to order with all board members present. The Navy JROTC color guard from Patrick Henry High School will now present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the colors. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Navy JROTC color guard from Patrick Henry High School. If you wish to address the board on any of the agenda items before the board today or on a subject that's not on today's agenda and your name is not already on the speaker list printed on blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you have not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Marty Stoltz, the Board Action Officer. Speaker forms are located at both entrances to the auditorium. I'd like a motion to adopt today's agenda with Section J, the superintendent's consent agenda that we consider next following the adoption of the agenda. We have a motion by Dr. Michael McQuary. Is there a second? And we have a second by trustee Richard Barrera. That passes unanimously. Does any board member wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? All right, and we do have a couple of items that I'll remove so that we can have speakers speak. J-1, J-6, J-10, 13, 19, 29, 38. 31, 32, and 36. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those just stated?
Still move.
We have a motion from Dr. Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Dr. Whiters Payne. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Section C on the agenda is student presentations, recognitions, and resolutions. We have a student presentation from San Diego High School, class of 2020 Vision Video. Dr. John Lee Evans.
Thank you. When we started Vision 2020, the class of 2020 was in first grade. We had this video from when they were sophomores in high school, and now they are juniors, so it's a little update on what they're up to. They're currently at San Diego High School. Some of them were previously at Roosevelt Middle School and Bernie Elementary.
My name is Dylan Allen Boyce Hunt.
My name is Trista Beth Livermore.
My name is Hiyab Meskina.
My name is Hannah Lily Lopez Powers.
My name is Emily Matson.
My name is Kirafeen Bajazee.
One thing that we're starting to learn right now that we haven't really learned before is more modern history, you know, like 1500s on. A lot of that is very applicable to today. It's very useful information to have to just know what's going on around the world.
World history is basically, in my opinion, like the closer we've gotten, like learning about our world around us and our past, because I think like history is one of the most important subjects.
For me, what's relevant is, I'm taking art classes and stuff, and I find that relevant to my life because in the future I want to be like an art therapist and stuff, and it's good because it shows like everyone's different points of views and like it shows, it gives everyone a different way to express their emotions and everything, so I think art's a really good way to like show what you're feeling and like-
I feel like we're all learning a lot better time management and how to stay more organized as we're dealing with a lot of other assignments and things outside of the school, outside of school and classes. So like that's a big thing that's affected us this year.
I personally, I take ASB, Associated Student Body, as one of my courses. Basically, we're considered the leaders of the school, and I feel like I day-to-day learn about how to better set an example for other people, how to stay organized, to cooperate with my members, a part of ASB. A lot of the time, we have to gain a lot of communication skills, which is very relevant and significant in life. It's substantial for everything you do. So I personally feel that's very relevant and a great life skill.
Just focus on, there's gonna be a time where you might have a teacher that gives, that assigns like a lot of work, and you should definitely focus on your mental health as well and just make sure that you're taking care of yourself.
It's also a bit significant that classes become a lot easier if you care about what you're learning in that class. It's so much easier to learn something you care about or, you know, make yourself care about it, find some connection that will make it easier for you to learn about it. If you, you know, connect it to something in your life and you have some reason to actually care about that class, then you're interested in that class and then you actually want to be in that class.
I didn't even realize it because like I tend to try to get involved in my school as much as possible. I just enjoy it, but for my sports teams, like I didn't realize till later that I created most of my friendships from there and for being in ASB. Any extracurriculars, like you'll create so many friendships and become closer to people at your school.
It's a huge leap from middle school to high school because you're gonna have bunches of clubs, you're gonna have almost every sport, I think we have lots of sports, but most of your, like, your social life here is gonna become like a whole new thing because you're gonna have, you're gonna have school, you're gonna have your outside school and your inside school, you know what I mean? And it's gonna be, sorry, sorry, it's gonna be a huge leap, is what I'm trying to say. Basically, like, your teenage years define who you are as an adult. You're gonna go into high school and come out a totally different person, and I, I think you really should stress that fact. Like every action you do, every grade you make, every, every game you win, whatever, every letter you earn, it's gonna change who you are coming out of high school.
First off, thanks for the later start times. I saw that in the news and I'm very appreciative of that. Can't wait for that, if that's gonna come. Yeah, by 2020, they're hoping to get all the start times later. Yeah, exactly, right? I know, I saw that in the news, I was like, bye. Yeah, exactly. So, you know, next couple of years, it's coming, it's coming. But, um, yay! But, one thing that I've noticed in my classes is that, one way that helps, as Christian was saying, connect the kids to the actual classes, is if you can have a little bit of interconnectedness. We have this in some of our classes, sometimes, you know, in our, you know, just basic connections, like if we're learning about something in history and we go into English and we're reading a paper from the same time period. It'll help keep your mind open to not just that one subject, but make sure that you're maintaining connections between different topics.
Please fund the arts. I know the music program and the theater program are, I'm fairly sure, almost solely responsible for funding any projects or concerts or plays they want to put on themselves. We need money, you know? Yeah, I can, I'm in tech theater and our tools got pretty much, almost entirely stolen last year, so our teacher's just bringing in his stuff from home every day, and he just like, it's not fair to him and he can't get funding for more. But also, as Hiyab said, mental health is really important. I'm totally switching gears there, but like, I have two points to get in, and this is where I'm going. Yeah, as far as like having more resources for students to go get help, where they feel comfortable and safe.
Trista, I think we should have more project-based learning and just keep us all engaged, because when I was in eighth grade, we had a lot of work in my history class, Hiyab was in my history class, and, but we had so many projects, and I feel like that really kept me engaged, and I really like understood what we were talking about, and I was really motivated
I think mental health is also overshadowing the issue of gun control, because I don't really understand why gun control is such a controversial topic, because you're not even advocating for guns to be completely eliminated, it's just for them to be controlled by who has them. And I feel like some people are overshadowing it by saying mental health, they're saying, oh, guns don't kill people, it's people who kill people, but obviously, that would not have been a significant amount of damage with a knife or any other weapon, but, so, yeah, just gun control. And I feel like students have become really inspired with each other, and we've all been like discussing it in classes, and students want to make a change and they want to get, they want to like build the knowledge on this issue so that our lawmakers can change it.
While some teachers don't bond with their students at all, I actually, right now, I'm having a math teacher who is extremely well at bonding with his students. We have an amazing teacher at this school who just came out, he's, you know, very fresh teacher, this is like, what, his first year teaching?
First.
Yeah, and he's amazing. He connects with his students brilliantly, he makes sure, he makes sure to provide ample time to actually work in class, which is something that a lot of teachers don't do. He makes sure to keep a good schedule, and he, most importantly, he provides a safe environment for kids. He allows, you know, great friendships to develop. He allows a lot of time in his class, but he still makes sure that the work gets done.
I totally agree about acknowledging certain teachers. I don't think there's a problem with saying his name, Mr. DeChino. He's a great teacher, just one of the many, who really puts in the time for his students, makes sure that they know that he cares. He's so fun to be around, yet he does get the work done like he stated. And I honestly, math is my favorite subject up until middle school, and to be honest, I think it highly depends on what teacher you have, because now I love math again, and I totally forgot how that felt, but it just goes to show that the teachers are the ones that really create the atmosphere and the desire for learning.
I generally feel very safe on campus and among the people here, but there are some times where I'll see certain things or I'll hear certain things that won't necessarily make me personally feel unsafe, but worry in general, like for people, again, how we were talking earlier, who feel ostracized or left out.
I also generally feel pretty, I feel safe at this school, but I do know people who will tell, who I hear say like, oh, I'm afraid to get jumped, or I'm afraid of encountering this person or this group of people. And I don't want to say you can entirely blame that person, but if I compare myself to them, I don't happen to encounter those type of problems. I, I like associate myself with different types of people, and I think it heavily depends on who you surround yourself with and the type of activity you get involved with.
I feel that it is really significant that today people are tending to be more open with what they mean and, you know, just open with how they act and how they feel, and I think that helps to diffuse situations a lot as well.
And I actually really enjoy it. I have never witnessed people like bullying one another using social media, and it's a very fun way to communicate with friends. It's also very, a very convenient way to communicate with friends. And I, I don't know, I just think it's, it's, it's a fun and cool tool to have. Obviously, some people abuse it and do bully others, but I mean, it seems so simple to me, like you block people that you don't want them to follow you anymore. I mean, that's, that's what, like, that's what you do, but I don't know. But I generally, I like it and I use it.
Like, sometimes I have to take a break from it and realize like my life and just be fair, yeah, present in my life and what I'm doing and-
Like, I see it as a two-sided coin, like heavily, like what Hannah, Hiyab, and Trista were saying, like, you can literally do anything on it, like friends, like, there's this one guy named Axel, he's like a Norwegian exchange, I think Norwegian exchange student, but yeah, he's up in Norway, and I'm seeing pictures of him in Norway, like chatting up, like, hey, how's it going, man? You know, like, and you get to stick with family, Facebook, but I don't use Facebook because that's for moms, you know? But, like, literally, you can do anything you want. You get to stay in contact with people, you don't, like, like, it can be distraction, but if they're not next to you, literally, like, you guys are interconnected, whoever you're chatting with.
But I also think it can kind of be a good thing as well, like if you're posting like a piece of your art or a video of you doing something that you think is really cool, and other people think that's cool too, I mean, I, I think that's great personally, because if it's something you really love and you see other people liking it too, I don't necessarily see a problem with that. I realize that some people can get really heavily dependent on that, which is obviously not good, but it's just, social media is a really great way to share what you like and what you love with other people and get people engaged in other things, and you find new things through that.
You can post about yourself or anybody else, and you can look at, a lot of people like to post, like not really high schoolers, but like, just like random people will see. They'll post about maybe their struggles or something that they've gone through, and then you can look at that, you can be like, and you can be inspired, or you can see something really creative and want to recreate it as well. And it's just a way to see, like, you're part of this huge world filled with so many different people, and maybe if you're going through not like a hard time, you can see there's so many other people out there that you can be friends with or that you could be connected with.
I feel like we're not so much gonna be going into newer, you know, crazier fields. I feel like really, we're gonna make sure that we've, what we've done, we've done the best we can, and I feel like we're gonna try to go back in, you know, perfect efficiency, perfect, you know, the systems that we have in place so that we can move forwards from a stable base.
I think we'll have like good leaders and people in our community like standing up for what they believe in and stuff.
I predict that there's gonna be major reforms in gun control and the healthcare system and like the scientific community, as Dylan was saying, and how, how people are able to talk about things.
I just hope that in the near future, many of us will feel accepted.
You know, not much has changed, but then when I look around, I realize that just in the past few months, so many students have been inspired and have been walking out and have been speaking about issues, not just gun control, but just like issues in general. And like, I don't know, I feel like our generation is just so vocal and involved, I don't know. And hopefully that continues.
But we really need to make some changes and strive for, you know, like, our, our world is dying, literally, because of us, and so we really need to all work together to fix that.
Life's still gonna go on, like, we left our mark, like, even right now, we're leaving our mark, and like this very room, this very second, we're gonna look back and we're hopefully gonna laugh about this.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans, for that video, and look forward to hearing a future presentation this evening with regard to Vision 2020 and your plan for moving forward and moving onward. At this point in time, to, we have, as a board, have a commitment that if there is an agenda item with lots of children involved, that we will front-load that in the agenda. So I'm gonna exercise the authority of the board president, and we're gonna go ahead and go to item F-1, the CUSN awards, because I see lots of children here for that, then H-3, H-4, and H-5, because there are lots of children for those items. Then we'll go back to the board agenda as published. All right, so let's go on to item F-1, which is in your, in the agenda, the Vision 2020 LCAP Presentation, Quality Schools in Every Neighborhood, CUSN Awards. So we're gonna recognize some quality schools in our own school district that are just doing a phenomenal job based on a variety of metrics, not just test scores. And this is an opportunity for us as a board to make a statement about what we value in San Diego Unified School District. Superintendent Cindy Martin, would you please present the item?
Yeah, thank you, President Visser. I know some people might have thought this was a little later, so if they're out in the auditor, or in the hallway, they can come in if people are still gathering for this item. Quality Schools in Every Neighborhood, as you heard our board president just say, are awards that we have established that are directly related to our district's vision of offering our quality school. We believe in every single neighborhood. You shouldn't have to leave your neighborhood to get a quality education, and we've defined quality broadly and specifically. It's aligned to our LCAP, and our goals, our funding decisions, and our metrics are all aligned, and this is our way of highlighting schools that we believe are examples and exemplars of what we as a community and as the, as the board is committed to defining what quality looks like. They represent goals 1 through 5 in our LCAP, and schools can be nominated or can self-nominate. In the 2017-18 school year, it was year two of what we call the CUSN awards, and the process, the first year, we opened up the nominations to communities and to schools, and now we're very happy tonight to report that we have 14 award recipients for the 17-18 school year. The process for being selected for a CUSN award includes the review of the nominations by the area superintendents and site visits in which the principals have shared with the instructional team how they believe they're exemplifying the specific LCAP goals as we've written them, for which they're being considered. Principals were then asked to share any materials that they had related to their sites' work on the specific goal, and they shared their thoughts on how other sites could replicate their successes. And then we looked at what criteria could be used in recognizing the specific goal in the future. Five of the 14 schools went and presented information about their work to the Board of Education at our June 7th LCAP workshops, so the board's heard from five of them already of the 14. The awards that we're presenting today recognize all 14 of the schools and their commitment to excellence, and we'd like to sincerely thank them for serving as models for how to successfully incorporate and breathe life into Vision 2020 and the LCAP goals, so it becomes the fabric of your school and your school community, and you have now become the exemplars for other schools. We talk about high-quality work in our district is great to have these community schools that are an example, and what you represent today is a way to replicate and take to scale that which we know is working, and for that, we appreciate what, not only what you've done for your own school community, but you're now an example for other schools to say, wow, I want to know how to get better at broad and challenging curriculum, or closing the achievement gap, or parent engagement, and we want to improve in that area, and we now have an example to look forward to. So each school being recognized today is going to receive a certificate and banner that they can proudly display at their school site. Could we please show everyone one of the banners? I hope the person who has the banner is in here to roll out. We need some helpers to roll these out. the school is being recognized for, and I think that one was Gage, and it was for strong leadership, right? And family engagement, strong leadership.
So that was Gage Elementary School?
That was an example of Gage. Everyone's gonna get their banner, hang up yours, Gage. Our board services officer just told me that we, I know some people might not be coming till 5:45 for this item, so hopefully if they're outside, they're coming in as we roll forward with announcing the winners for this year. So what we'd like to do now is to call up each school up to the stage so we receive their certificates. We'd like you to remain onstage for a group photo at the conclusion of the awards presentation, and then after the photo, we're gonna hand out each of the banners so you can proudly display them at your schools. We're gonna begin with the school being recognized for LCAP Goal 1, Closing the Achievement Gap with High Expectations for All, Bernie Elementary, and accepting for Bernie is Principal Stage directions, you'll set the flow for every other school. Yes, Amanda, thank you. Receiving the CUSN Award for LCAP Goal 2, Access to Broad and Challenging Curriculum, are Field and Hawthorne Elementary Schools and Kearney High School. Accepting for Field Elementary is Principal Amy Griffiths. Accepting for Hawthorne is Principal Lauren Robinson, and Kearney High School, I don't think is here right now, but I know there's one person from Kearney, Amy Redding. I don't know if someone else is here yet from Kearney. You can come up, thank you. LCAP Goal 3, Quality Leadership, Teaching, and Learning. The award winners are Alcott and Gage Elementary School. Will Principals Michelle Riley and Kathy Burns please join us up on stage? Quality Leadership, Teaching, and Learning. So we have five schools recognized for LCAP Goal 4, so if you're looking for how to improve in this area, you have five fabulous examples. LCAP Goal 4, I could test you, does anyone remember what that is? Mike hasn't memorized, you can look on the posters. LCAP Goal 4 is Positive School Environment, Climate, and Culture. I'm so happy that we're recognizing five schools because we understand the importance of positive school environment, climate, and culture, and I'm proud to say that we have five schools that are shining examples of what that looks like in action. Hancock Elementary, Principal Nona Richard. Jones Elementary, Principal Allison Buell. Montgomery, Principal Stephanie Brown. Mount Everest Academy, Ron Zapala, Counselors accepting the award on behalf of Principal Courtney Brown. And Walker Elementary, Principal Justin Phillips. And finally, tonight, receiving the CUSN Award for Goal 5, Family and Community Engagement, are EB Scripps, Johnson, and Rolando Park Elementary School. So happy to have three schools showing what proud and strong family and community engagements are. Accepting the awards are EB Scripps Principal Liz Sloan. Johnson, Principal Tracy Jenkins-Martin. And Rolando Park Principal Anthony DeLuca. A very warm congratulations to all of our award winners. We'd like to thank you for your efforts, and can I please have the board members join me for a photo with all the award winners? And can I please have the board members join me for a photo with all the award winners? Cheryl, John's, I mean Cheryl's calling you.
This, just for the record, this is an action item. Can I get a motion? We have a motion from Trustee Barrera. Can I get a second? We have a second from Dr. John Lee Evans. Any board member comments or questions before we vote? All right, please vote. Oh, I apologize. Please clear the board. We do have one speaker, or two speakers. Francine Maxwell, you have two minutes, and Mary Ann Hawk, you have two minutes. Thank you, Francine, I apologize.
Francine Maxwell, community member. As I celebrate Johnson Elementary, I'm excited for all the work that they do with family and community engagement. I have many neighbors and attend church with many people that are involved with Johnson Elementary. Congratulations to all the winners. But I wanted us to pay special attention to the fact that many of us in the community, we didn't know exactly how or why these schools were nominated or selected, so thank you for the overview in the beginning. The problem is, and I need the board to pay close attention, that the only school in District E is Johnson Elementary, was awarded Family and Community Engagement. Apparently, no school in District E are closing the achievement gap or have broad and challenging curriculum. So, as we fight for our own districts, I completely understand, but we're in this together. So, we are not victorious unless we celebrate the weakest among us. And the weakest among us is District E. So, as we continue to celebrate those 14, I'd like us to pay special attention to the schools and the awards that you're giving District E. Johnson Elementary has earned it, Hancock, everybody has earned their awards. But I need us to pay close attention to what's not occurring in District E. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Hawk. Okay. Any other board member comments or questions?
I just wanted to make a correction that under, can you scroll that up a little bit? Who's ever controlling that one? Under Goal 5, if you scroll down a little bit, it says Scripps Ranch High School, and it was supposed to be EB Scripps, the principal just pointed it out to me. So, in the board item, can we make a correction? EB Scripps? Okay, thank you.
And Rolando Park is in E also.
Rolando, it was pointed out by Dr. Sharon Wider-Payne that Rolando Park in District E is also one of the 14 recipients this evening. So, congratulations to all 14 schools. Again, these are examples of schools that are exemplary in that area and a model of best practices for other schools to learn from. Not to say that other schools are not achieving, but at this high level. These are the A++ schools in their particular category.
President Visor?
Yes.
Just another observation, I believe 10 of the 16 clusters had award winners.
Thank you for that. All right, at this point in time, we are now moving to our action item. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. We now move to item H3 in your agenda. Item H3 is the public hearing. This is an information item only, to consider the renewal of charter petition for Empower Charter School. All right, we have several speakers on the item, but before we go to the item, Superintendent Martin, would you please present? H3.
Yes, thank you, President Visor. I'd like to introduce Deidra Walsh, who leads our Charter School office. And is Anna Day coming up with you, or you're just carrying those heavy binders up all by yourself? Thank you. And I know there's significant materials that have been submitted from each of the charters, and the board has all of the materials, and you have the summary for, and are prepared for any questions for tonight's public hearing, and I'll let you present. Thank you, Deidra.
Good evening. So, item H3 is the public hearing to consider the renewal of the charter petition for Empower Charter School. The school is seeking a five-year renewal term, beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2024. The initial charter petition was approved with conditions on December 3, 2013, for a five-year term. The school currently serves grades K through 6 at a private site and at a co-located site with Linda Vista Elementary. Table 1, that's provided, has an overview of Empower Charter School. Table 2 summarizes the projected enrollment for the requested five-year term. Table 3 summarizes the Empower Board. And Empower's enrollment for the 17-18 school year consisted of students that would have otherwise attended the schools identified in Table 4. And while students come from 27 different district elementary schools and four district middle schools, 55% came from two district elementary schools. District staff is reviewing the charter renewal documents submitted by Empower and will bring a recommendation to grant or deny at a subsequent board meeting. Thank you.
So, with that, let's go to testimony on this information item. Board guidelines set out 10 minutes per side, four, and 10 minutes for a side against. So, on item H3, it looks like they've submitted seven speakers, and so each speaker will be limited to two minutes apiece. I'll just read off the speakers. I don't know if you have a particular order that you would prefer to go in. Bobby Latson, Faith Vargas, Dina Cano, Stephen Barata, Demi Brown, Alberto Ochoa, and Kamal Martin. Come forward in the order, if you have no order, I can call you in the order as we received it online. Okay, please state your name for the record if you choose.
Good evening. My name is Kamal Martin, Regional Director of Projects for the California Charter School Association. Very quickly, I'd like to state that CCA very strongly supports the renewal of Empower Charter School. This unique tri-language immersion program is serving families in a specifically challenged area of the Linda Vista community. It's providing children and families with the quality choice of public schools within their own community. The school is small, yet growing, and with a proven educational program. Their leader has proven that she has the capacity to manage the split sites and still oversee academic progress in her students. And you will see and hear the support of community members tonight, and we're confident that you'll agree with us that Empower must continue in their quest to provide families in the Linda Vista community with a quality program of choice for another five years. And we look forward to a recommendation of approval by staff and a positive vote at the next meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Barata. I'm the board chair of Empower. I am also the Director of Communications at California Charter Schools Association. I spent nearly a decade at Avid and four years here, back when it was called San Diego City Schools. That's all to say, I've had a chance to see lots of schools, and Empower is a great school. We have retained four original board members and added four more in recent years, providing us continuity while also giving us a wide range of expertise and representation from parents, staff, and community members. We have always exceeded our financial fiscal requirements, every year never audit finding, which is evidence of strong fiscal management and internal controls. Last year, we did do an internal move to a deficit in order to operate two sites in the spirit of cooperation with the district's Prop 39 offer for half of our students, but no more deficits moving forward, and strong reserve plan for the future, even with the most conservative enrollment numbers. We have really engaged parents. At the beginning of the summer, I was honored to hand out certificates at our kindergarten and sixth grade graduation, and it was amazing to see so many parents attending and the work the school was doing to make them feel welcome. We added Mandarin as a component out to our curriculum this year, making us the only trilingual school in the city of San Diego. Thank you for your careful consideration of our new position. We're excited and look forward to continuing to be a unique school choice and a good neighbor in Linda Vista.
Good afternoon. My name is Alberto Ochoa. I live in the Linda Vista community. I'm also a member of the Linda Vista Planning Group, and I am here to support Empower Charter School's renewal. As per the district's 209 language policy, they believe that a world-class 21st century education must be provided to every student with the highest quality of education, which includes bilinguality and enhanced learning opportunities in rural languages. I strongly support Empower Charter. They promote bilinguality in this school community that is linguistically and culturally diverse and rich in socio-cultural assets. The school fits well with the Linda Vista community. Its focus is on academics while integrating language and culture to produce global productive citizens. Its Spanish dual-language inversion, its collaborative learning approach, its character development focus, and inquiry learning point to a productive learning environment for our students in the Linda Vista community. I ask you to support to renew Empower's proposal for the next five years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dina Cano. I am a Linda Vista resident and also a mother to two sons, who are among the first students at Empower when we first opened, one as a kindergartner and the other as a second grader. Both of my boys have been diagnosed as dyslexic, so I'm especially appreciative of how the school encompasses all learning types. Our inquiry-based learning and individualized teaching approach has been a game changer for my dyslexic boys, and our fitness and athletic focus has really given them a space to shine. I'd really appreciate your support so that my boys can continue to attend this school.
Bobby Latson, Faith Vargas, Demi Brown, please come forward and speak. Oh, okay. I understand.
Good evening, President Visor, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Martin. My name is Demi Brown, and I have the honor of being the founder and executive director for Empower Charter School. I founded Empower quite simply because I wanted a school like this to exist for my future child, a school that inspires children through the study of language, culture, incorporating inquiry, and a love of fitness and health. Through my conversations with Linda Vista community members, our school's mission was a perfect complement to the multicultural and multilingual community. Empower began as a grassroots, community-inspired school, and it is this unity that has allowed us to create a strong foundation to build off of. Empower Charter School's program is summarized in three words and three languages. Mind, mente, zue, muscles, musculos, gido, the kids can do this too, and heart, corazón, sin. This evening, I'm honored to share about some of the successes of our school program. Teacher retention. We have a high teacher retention rate, which has allowed us to build a strong foundation in both academics and school culture. Award-winning. This team's dedication to success has been recognized by the San Diego County Office of Education's Educational Leadership and Bilinguality Symposium. Most importantly, our students are making academic progress, and there is a handout that I shared for each of you. On the CASP State Test, overall scores have increased each year in reading, math, reading and math in all subgroups. In 2017, when looking at student subgroups, most were on par with or outperforming the district and state in English and math. In addition, our NWEA MAPS data shows that the students who began our program in kindergarten are already outperforming the nation in reading, language, and math. English learner success. Our English learners are performing at the top in both the district and state in English Language Arts on the CASP. In 2017, English learner's performance was ranked 34th out of 118 district elementary schools in the top one-third. However, when accounting for schools with high English learner populations like Empower, it was in the top three. Our English learners also have high reclassification rates. In 2017, we ranked in the top 11th, and in 2016, we ranked in the top 7th when compared to all 118 elementary schools. Whole-child focus. We are not just about academics, we are about the whole child. Empower Charter School students' fitness test results have been among the highest in the state for two consecutive years. At least 91% of students are meeting at least four out of the six healthy fitness zones. Safe-school climate. We have a school-wide focus on restorative practices and developing our students' leadership and character development, which includes teaching self-regulation through daily mindfulness, specific character keys for success, and daily class circles to build community. As a school inspired by the community, we have also facilitated a collaborative working relationship with our neighborhood schools and other dual-language schools around San Diego. We're excited about the great things happening at Montgomery that were shared here tonight. In fact, we encourage our outgoing middle schoolers to attend their neighborhood school, and historically, the majority have done just that. We believe in the mantra that it takes a village. In fact, if I could have our village, some were still arriving, but those that are here, if I could have our village, please stand. I'll wrap it up. This is our village. We are honored to be part of the educational options in Linda Vista and have enjoyed our successful partnership with the district. Next, we will conclude our presentation with two students that have been there since day one, who will briefly share about our school. Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Bobby Latson, tengo 10 años y estoy en quinto grado. Me encanta mi escuela Empower Charter porque enseñan español y mandarín. Todos los padres, ayudantes, personal, y estudiantes son muy amables. También me gusta el CrossFit porque me encanta el deporte. CrossFit es un entrenamiento con diferentes puestos para cada actividad. Estas son algunas razones por lo cual me encanta Empower Charter School. Gracias. Hi, my name is Bobby Latson, and I am 10 years old in fifth grade. I love Empower Charter School because they teach Spanish and Mandarin. All the parents, staff, helpers, and students are really kind. I also like CrossFit because I love to do sports. CrossFit is a type of training where there's different stations for each activity. These are some of the reasons why I love Empower Charter School. Thank you for your support.
Good evening, Board Trustees and Superintendent Martin. My name is Faith Vargas, and I've been a student at Empower since the school opened in 2014. Empower Charter School teaches English, Spanish, and Mandarin, which I appreciate because I'll soon be able to understand people from around the world. This ties in with our annual gala where we research a culture and understand the history. Additionally, I like that we have CrossFit in addition to PE because it is unique and fun. Student council is one of the ways I have been a part of Empower Charter School, where my ideas and the decisions I make impact the school on a high level. The Empower Charter School has so many different and fun electives, my favorite part is the Empower community. The love, support, and friendships between staff, students, teachers, and parents create a strong school community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the speakers, I believe, on Item H3. Thank you. And let's open the public hearing. Any board member comments or questions at this time? Trustee Richard Barrera.
Thank you, President Beiser. Thank you for the Empower presentation and the community. And I had a chance to visit the school a few months ago, and I really appreciate the spirit there, and I appreciate also the effort to work collaboratively with Linda Vista Elementary and with the existing schools in the Linda Vista cluster. I just had a couple of questions right now for the public hearing. One is, I wasn't quite understanding Demi's references to the CASP scores, and maybe I misheard what Demi was saying, but I understood you to say that your 1617 CASP results in ELA in math were exceeding district or state averages, and that's not what I see here. I see 38.64%. It's an increase, you know, over the last two years, from 25% to 38.64, and an increase in math from 20 to 25, but those numbers don't match the district's averages. So maybe I misheard you.
Thank you. What I was stating was that most of our subgroups, if you look at the actual breakdown of our English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged students in those subgroups are on par.
Got it. Great. No, that's terrific. And then the other, just, you know, question that maybe we can address between now and when we come forward with a decision is the enrollment projections. It seems that you've gone from 68 to 109 to 116 to 127 this year, but then it seems like pretty significant jumps that we're projecting going forward, up to 252 in the 23-24 year. Maybe you could talk a little bit about how you expect to make that enrollment.
Our projections were actually really conservative. For example, we projected 150-odd students for next school year, and we already have 144 enrolled this school year. And then historically, when we look at our enrollment projection history, it's ranged from, it's averaged about 15%. Most of the projections are 10 to 13%. One year, there was about 17%, but it's on par, and we even assume attrition as the students go from grade to grade, just because we're an immersion school. We usually fill the spaces, but we just wanted to be extra conservative in our enrollment projections.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? Dr. McQuarrie.
Sure. Yeah, I also have visited Empower, and I met with Demi Brown, and we talked about the program and the difficulties it is to have two sites spread across a small neighborhood. I think she's been working diligently to work that out. What I say within the school is a collaborative effort to partner with surrounding schools. I think the fact that they're encouraging their students to go to Montgomery and they're creating that partnership, I agree, is an excellent sign. It also appears that over the multiple years, the school has increased its scores and is doing better from when it started to where it is now, so you're making positive growth there. And I also noted the fact that in terms of the scores as compared to all students, it may not compare as well, but as you take a look at your subgroups, you seem to be doing quite well. And we have a concern within our own system on dealing with having our subgroups compare and close the achievement gap. The question I have is how you've been able to integrate the third language with Chinese along with what you were doing with English and Spanish, and I want to know what adjustments you're making to make that work.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. McQuarrie, and for visiting our school as well. So this is our first year with the Mandarin, and it's an enrichment. So twice a week, the students receive 30 minutes of Mandarin enrichment. Some students receive the Mandarin enrichment, and the others are in a math reteaching group, and then they switch. The students that were in the math reteaching group with the classroom teacher go to the Mandarin teacher for a Chinese culture and kind of musical experience with the Mandarin, and then the teachers with the other students, giving them an extra challenge or enrichment opportunity.
Another comment, also, in being with you and in the community with Linda Vista and going on the community tour of Linda Vista and talking with the parents and the business that are in Linda Vista, the work that you're doing to connect with that community, I think, is outstanding. The fact that you're on the Linda Vista Town Council as well speaks to your desire to have a school that is part of the community and building a quality school, as at the same time you're building a quality community. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Whitehurst Payne has comments or questions, so just hang down.
I wonder whether or not you've gotten any indication for this year. I'm sorry.
If you want to stay at the podium, I believe she wants to be able to see you.
Hi.
Hi. I wonder whether you've gotten any indication about your scores for this past year.
Yes, we have, and we are analyzing those and looking at how we did with the different subgroups, and not all of the scores were out for the different district schools at the time to see also how we compared with them as well.
But you with yourself in comparison to last year overall.
Am I allowed to comment on that, though? I believe they're in.
Point of order. Are those scores still under embargo?
They're under embargo right now.
Yeah, so it's against the law for her to comment on them.
Yes, but my only concern is that we, math seems to be an area throughout, and it's an ongoing issue, whether it's a charter school, whether it's a traditional school. Math is an issue. I heard you say that you are doing some reteaching, but my question would be, what else are you doing? What other strategies are you using?
Oh, yes. So we started last year with something called Guided Math, similar to Guided Reading, and this board has talked about numeracy and literacy. So it's a similar concept that we look at in Language Arts, where our students are receiving instruction in small groups. And then we continued that work where all of our teachers were trained in cognitively-guided instruction, CGI. And so what that does is it focuses on, we call it "experience before label." The students get the experience of the number sense before giving them the algorithm. And so those are some of the things that we're doing to improve on the CASP in math. Our NWEA MAPS data shows that our students are making growth as well, and they're hitting their targets on that measure. So there's other measures as well, but yeah, math is an issue for a lot of us.
It is. I'm gonna be talking to all the charters and everybody else about that for this year.
Okay. If there are no other board member comments or questions, that concludes Item H3 on our agenda, which is an information item, so I'll close the public hearing. With that, let's move on to Item H4, which is the public hearing to consider the renewal of the charter petition for the O'Farrell Charter School and Ingenuity Charter School. I'll open the public hearing. We have several speakers, so I'm not sure how you guys want to do this. You get a total of 10 minutes to speak, and you have submitted 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. So that means you'd each get about 47 seconds each. How do you want to do it? Do you want me to just start the 10-minute clock, and when you run out, they just don't get to speak?
We can stay within the 10 minutes.
Okay. And then let's try to make sure the students are allowed to speak before the time expires, please. You have 10 minutes. Please speak in any order.
Thank you, Trustees and Superintendent Martin. My name is Brian Rainey, and I am the high school principal at the O'Farrell Charter School. O'Farrell, as you know, is a pre-K-12 school. We are an avid national demonstration school, an NCUST award-winning school, and recently, we were named by U.S. News &amp; World Report as one of the top 1,000 high schools in the country. Our focus is a college-going atmosphere. Our focus is to make sure our students are prepared for a four-year university. Just one of the ways that we achieve that goal is the UC system in California looks at the top 9% of students at a school site. They will only accept you if you fall within the top 9% of students at your school site, or you fall within the top 9% of students in California. Our last graduating class, 34% of our students were accepted to a UC. And so we are reaching our mission of getting our students to college, and we've asked a few of them and some parents and teachers to come talk about that, and so I will turn things over to them.
Hello, my name is Amira Ali, and I'm an eighth grader at O'Farrell. O'Farrell is a very inclusive and welcoming school that has many resources and individualized education plans to help their students succeed. When I started O'Farrell in sixth grade, I was pretty lost when it came to what my goals were for the next three years, how I was going to be a successful student, and where my first class was. However, none of these confusions lasted pretty long. I was given so much guidance about goal-setting and being a successful student, as well as a map of the school. Many opportunities have been given to me to be a well-rounded student, like extracurricular activities, advanced courses, and something called AVID. The O'Farrell Charter School is an avid national demonstrational school. This means there is AVID everywhere you go. It is an academic and emotional sanctuary. It helps me grow and improve as a student and an individual. I have been in AVID for two years, this year being my third. It gives me the support that I need to persevere, believe in my abilities, and be a better person than I was yesterday. But that is only one of the great things about O'Farrell. There are also many fun activities we have, like field trips and competitions between our home bases. These competitions help us collaborate and share our ideas, because we really are like a team. Another thing I love about O'Farrell is how individualized everyone's educational path is. Whether you're taking advanced courses or tutoring before or after school, there is always something that will work for you to excel at school. O'Farrell also has many opportunities for students to be well-rounded, such as after-school clubs. Last year, I was in a club called MESA, which stands for Math, Engineering, Science, and Achievement. We utilize our math and science skills to create things like wooden gliders and mousetrap cars, but we also learn to use our abilities to empower ourselves. When I started middle school, I was completely lost and completely unprepared for what middle school had to throw at me. Now, in my final year of middle school, I have been given an abundance of tools to be a prosperous student. I feel prepared for what high school has to offer and what is in store for me after. I know college is a long ways away for me, but I have full confidence in getting there because O'Farrell has guided me on the path to achievement and an overall feeling of content. Thank you.
My name is Santos Plaza, and I'm a senior at O'Farrell Charter High School. I'd like to say that O'Farrell is my home away from home. The staff there has given me plenty of opportunities to better myself and prepare me for the next step. In terms of academics, I'm fully confident in my ability to be accepted into a four-year university, and I'm confident in my application to Stanford this year. And at O'Farrell, they push us and really just support us to become citizens of our community, and that way is through community service, and they have a club called Key Club. And here, we help our community in environmental rehabilitation. We help the homeless around our neighborhood. And from there, we are also able to reach our graduation requirements, and from there, we can continue to do what we want to do, and they push us to follow our dreams and our goals. The teachers at O'Farrell have become mentors to me. They have always pushed me to succeed and to persevere through the difficulties that O'Farrell may throw at you with academics, but it has always been in the face of success and always pushing you towards that. And I'm really proud that I can say that I will be graduating from O'Farrell and that I'm glad that I was able to go. It's a privilege for me. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Shaw. I'm a fifth-grade teacher with O'Farrell Charter School. This is my sixth year with O'Farrell. O'Farrell continues to be a foundationist in this community. I can attest to that because I was a student at O'Farrell when it first became a charter school. O'Farrell has taught me academic excellence, relationship-building, and character development. So now I have the opportunity to give back to my community and make sure our students are successful in the future. It gives the students an opportunity to learn, grow, and make an impact on our community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany DeGraffin-Reid, and I am the principal for Ingenuity Charter School. Ingenuity is a unique, independent study-blended learning program that serves students grades six through 12 in an alternative environment. Ingenuity is a unique program because it is state-approved DAS school, Dashboard Alternative School. What that actually means is that over 70% of our student population is at risk. Students come to us for a variety of reasons, but all with one goal: they're looking for a high-quality education in an alternative environment, and that's what we provide. We have all of our Ingenuity staff here in their black polos to support Ingenuity Charter renewal, but I know that you want to hear from parents and students, so I'll go ahead and let them speak now.
Hello, my name is Alejandro. I'm a graduate student from Ingenuity. Ingenuity is a place where there's a second chance. I was in danger of dropping out and not graduating. I graduated a year late, but they pushed me from pushing me and pushing me from proceeding my graduation. I was a student who did not care, who did not pay attention, but all my teachers turned me around. I'm a full-time student. I'm a CCSD. I work, and I do everything to provide for me and my family. Ingenuity has taught me all the skills I needed to be a full-time student, to be a full-time worker, anything that I needed to succeed in life. Ingenuity is an amazing school. They provided everything that every, each individual student needed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yamilah, and I'm currently a junior at Ingenuity Charter School. Ingenuity Charter School is like, how do I say? It's a good school, like the teachers push you and push you, and which I like that because I have my one-on-one with my teacher, and which in the other school I was attending, I didn't have that. And even though it's annoying and all by getting pushed by a teacher, I mean, it's really helping me, and that's it. Thank you.
My name is Angel Mundo, and I am a senior at Ingenuity Charter. When I started, I was with depression. I was, and I was at Morse before, and that's when I had depression because I was bullied. And so when I moved, I moved to Ingenuity, and they took me in, and it's, sorry. They've pushed me harder to do my work and everything, and there was really good teachers And before, I was at risk at not being able to graduate. And right now, they've pushed me and pushed me, and I am able to graduate this year. And yeah, thank you.
You have about 35 seconds remaining in your time.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Popoca. Yo estoy muy contenta de que existan estos programas. Han ayudado mucho a mi hijo. Sus grados están altos. Hay buena comunicación con los maestros, con nosotros los papás. Los maestros con mi hijo estamos siempre trabajando en equipo. Y yo estoy contenta de que este programa exista. Gracias.
So she's a parent, and she's very happy to be at the school. Her son's grades have shown great improvement, and she's happy that this program exists.
Thank you very much. That concludes our
That concludes our speakers on item H4. Any board member comments or questions during the public hearing on the information item before us? Trustee Barrera?
All right. Thank you, President Boiser. I just wanted to say to O'Farrell, your 34% acceptance rate into the UCs for your graduating class is really commendable, and you should be very proud, and I think all of us should be very proud of that work, so I want to congratulate you for that.
Dr. McQuary?
Right, yeah, I also want to acknowledge that, and somewhat related to that, I'm wondering, is there some follow-up to support your students after they graduate, then you get accepted? Does he have a high percentage of students with a UC in the state colleges, as well as your four-years? What is, do you do any tracking on those students and how well they're doing once they get into college and university?
Thank you, that's a good question. That's probably one of the biggest struggles for all schools, when students leave, because most of, everything they do at that point is voluntary, whether they want to give you information. But because we have such strong relationships with our students, we stay in contact with most of them through email. To be honest, most of them come back to visit us very often. But we also have Naviance that helps us to track that, and they've improved their services, so we're using those as well.
Somewhat related, that Price also has high graduation rates, and they do a significant amount of follow-up and support with students after they leave. And congratulations on being ranked in the top high schools in the country. San Diego Unified has 10 of their 16 high schools within that ranking as well, and so I'm happy to see you and a couple of other charters in that same group. Congratulations. Do we have a question? Your numbers seem to, you seem to have a higher numbers than, just in comparison groups, higher percentages of low-income than we have in some of our other schools in the district, as well as a lower percentage of special ed students, not so much at Ingenuity, but more at O'Farrell. Is there a reason your numbers are higher, low-income, and maybe a reason why they're lower in special ed? At Ingenuity, it's much higher than our district average. I think it's specifically at...
I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think our special ed are close to the same. I don't think they're significantly lower, but we do have a significantly low population of underserved students, and so being successful with those students is challenging, but that is what we do, and we do well at it.
But it might just be the way the numbers are presented here, but your students with disabilities, 9.7, district-wide, we're pretty close to 12%.
I know. Good evening, my name's Jill Anderson. I'm the middle school principal. I know we just got an update from our director of special ed this week, and I believe our numbers for this year are close to 12, we're nearing 12% with the special ed population.
Thank you. The other thing I've done was to take, and I'll just use the O'Farrell as an example, I'll take you, the O'Farrell scores as compared to their comparison group, both by geography, as well as by where your students would tend to go to school anyway. And you're performing quite, quite well when we draw those comparisons. So of the, of the, of the, of the, there are six possible comparisons, if you rank the E, English Language Arts, and the math across the six schools that you have, in all but one area, so you're getting like five out of six, or 10 out of 12 of those targets, where your students are scoring better than the comparison groups. I just wanted, I think I read that correctly, and if so, I want to commend you for the work you're doing. Thank you.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
I too want to congratulate O'Farrell. It is in my community, and that was my neighbor who spoke a moment ago, who was a teacher there. I am proud that it's a beautiful school, and I guess I was around even when it opened back in the Dark Ages as a charter school. Bob Stein, I believe it was, was the person who spearheaded that initially. And I have the distinct privilege of having taught there before it became a charter school, so I go way back with O'Farrell. And I like the way you have an accounting of all of your students, and I think this is something we've been asking all of the schools to do, is to know every child in the school and where each and every child is going. It appeared that some of the students were accepted at both UC and CSU, because we have 84% of them, if you were to count them independently or mutually exclusive, and then 62% of them at the four-year university. So somewhere in there, some students applied to more than one university and was accepted. But I think I really like the way you've accounted for all the students at your school, your various schools. And when I took a look at what was going on in math, you were right in there, close to what Morse High School, but part of the problem is your scores are coming in as one single score, when you have pre-K all the way up through 12, and you know, you get a mishmash of what the response really, really should be. But overall, one of the things I would like to see happen is for us to perhaps work together as a community, to see if we can address math scores in our community. If you're doing something right, then maybe we can learn, and vice versa, if we're doing something. There's a school, as in this case, Morse High School, was doing something right, then maybe we can work together, because I think that we all have to begin to look at our competition is not just these schools, but it's worldwide. That we're, that we in San Diego are competing with schools in North Korea, in China, in wherever else in the world, because we need to compete on a world stage for what needs to be done in this country. I commend you on this report, and thank you.
Any other board member comments or question on this information item? All right, I'll close the public hearing, and with that, we'll move on to item H5. H5 is the public hearing to consider the renewal of the charter petition for Thrive Public Schools. We have several speakers in support and several speakers against. So per board guidelines that I've articulated earlier on the previous two items, each side will get a total of 10 minutes. And so, speaking in support, Nicole Assisi, Peter Marve, Christina Hereford Watkins, Jackie Furtado, and Steve Ascar. Please come forward and speak in any order. You have a total of 10 minutes, and we will begin the clock when you start speaking.
My name is Peter Marve. I'm a Thrive parent and also a community member of Linda Vista. Two years ago, when I was searching for a school, we heard about Thrive Public Schools by word of mouth. It appeared to resonate with what we hoped for our child. We were happy with our choice. Today, we see how he loves school and how he loves his teachers. Thrive is helping us to better understand where our child is strong and learns fairly quickly. We are also learning where he needs some additional attention and support. He's also learning to take charge of his own growth. We are also encouraged to see how our child is being formed into a respectful and a responsible citizen. Thrive is striving to create an environment where staff and kids from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds, different learning abilities, different religious backgrounds, among others, can live together and value each other. We see how the help, the staff are helping our child navigate his world and his unique personality and needs. People told me that I could only get this quality of education from a private school with fees far beyond what we can be able to afford, but now I disprove them. I recommend Thrive to other families, because I see the value. I know my parents and other parents and guardians would agree with me, and now is the time to make Thrive Public School a charter of the district. Thrive Public School deserves your support, and the parents at Thrive are counting on the board to reauthorize the school locally. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, and Superintendent Martin, it's great to be here with you tonight. My name's Steve Ascar. I'm dean of student culture at the elementary school. I want to tell you a story tonight about a young man who, last September, I sat down with him in circle, and the question was, what do you want to be when you get older? And he didn't say anything in circle, but he gets me right before snack, and he tugs me on the shirt, gets me down to his ear, his eye level, and he says, "Mr. Steve, I want to be a superhero." And he looks at me, and with these eyes, and I asked him, and I said, "What do you mean superhero?" And he's like, "I want to change the world," and then he just runs off. And all throughout last year, I began to see this theme of becoming a superhero, and I saw it in two ways. One was the courage that he had to advocate for his community. Through the PBL structure that we have at Thrive, he was able to advocate for more affordable housing in a situation where him and his single mother were struggling to make ends meet. And the second aspect of becoming a superhero for this young boy was the courage that he showed, the resilience that he showed, showing up every day and never giving up, even when things were tough. And through the blended model that we have at Thrive, he was able to grow, make up two years' worth of growth in math, and almost a year and a half's worth of growth in literacy. And as this boy left my classroom last year, I sat down with him one more time, and I said, "Hey, you did it. You became a superhero here at Thrive." And it's interesting, because him and his mother then came up to me and said, "Mr. Steve, we drove for over 30 minutes every day to make it here, to Thrive, because this is what we envisioned for our son, and this is what we thought was possible for him, and we didn't want to go anywhere else. This is where we choose to be." And I leave that with you today, that the hope is for me that every kid could have this chance to have a transformative education, and I think Thrive provides that. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Christina Hereford Watkins. I have been teaching math and science for the past decade in a variety of school settings, private, public, parochial, charter, up and down the California coast. I'm happy that I've settled back in San Diego, my hometown, and I'm delighted that I found a dedicated and terrific learning community here at Thrive Public Schools. As a teacher, what I love most about Thrive is that we utilize social and emotional learning restorative justice practices in conjunction with Love and Logic, projects-based learning, and real-world learning applications. Our foundation is based on relationships. We sincerely care about the children and want them to be who they are created to be. We work on our social-emotional learning and integrating it into all subjects, explicitly taught to provide students the tools to practice and to become good humans, as Dr. Nicole says. It's not just to teach them the content, but to teach them how to be people in our global society that you mentioned. Thrive empowers me to excite young minds with hands-on experiments, interactive lessons, fun songs, and field trips. I really appreciate the flexibility and encouragement from Thrive to provide such opportunities for my students, as my peers do, to pursue deep and meaningful connections with the content and real-world learning, both on our classroom sites and offsites. Don't you remember visiting a museum or going to like a big behind-the-scenes building of like SDG&E or Qualcomm, seeing that firsthand? I feel like Thrive has empowered me and enabled me to like be my own Miss Frizzle, you know, from the magic school bus, and to give these kids these opportunities to make learning come real and come alive. When it comes down to it, students here really enjoy learning, and teachers love teaching. They are in an environment where they can actually thrive. Each classroom offers this personalized learning, and where students get whole classroom content, as well on one-on-one attention with ourselves and in small groups. Thank you. One more thing? I'm sorry, thank you. We do everything we can to provide the best opportunity, as I believe all schools try and do, and we are here to provide them an opportunity to thrive in whichever environment they're in. We, as students, staff, and faculty, and parents, have all chosen to be here at Thrive, and I implore you to choose to allow Thrive to be a part of the district so that we can continue to serve with you, to provide students in San Diego County a wonderful education that they all deserve. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jackie Furtado, and as a board member and a founding parent at Thrive, I'm here to tell you the two main reasons why I love our school. To start, the wonderful, dedicated community of parents, staff, and faculty is a part of a community that seeks, listens, and respects the voice of students, parents, and families through multiple channels. Last but not least, the enormous amount of personalized care each of the student gets. So my son has been a part of this community since the very beginning. We were part of the founding 65, and have been lucky and fortunate enough to grow with this institution. Four years ago, we began our search to find an educational institution for our son that was personalized, progressive, and fostered a diverse and inclusive learning environment. We found all of that and more in Thrive. Choosing Thrive was one of the most valuable decisions our family has ever made. Each day, my son tinkers, collaborates, and problem solves, starting from a place of empathy and mindfulness. He has a genuine excitement for learning, and I couldn't think of a better environment to prepare him for college and his future. Thank you for your time, and we hope to have your support to become an authorized charter school of the district. Thank you so much.
Superintendent Martin, trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here representing the students, parents, and staff at Thrive as our co-founder and CEO, but I wanted you to see some of the faces who have joined us tonight, so I'd like to ask our staff, parents, and students to stand up for a second. They're the ones for whom we do this work every day. And before I tell you more about Thrive, I wanted to acknowledge the amazing work that all of you do, especially Dr. McQuary, who has taken us under his wing and spoke at a ribbon-cutting, has come to see our schools. We're lucky to have two of our four campuses in Dr. McQuary's district, and our other two schools are in Dr. Whitehurst Payne's district, and we're really excited to have you for a visit next week, so thank you for coming. But most of all, thank you, all of you, for shepherding the children whom we both serve. Thrive has been state-authorized for the past four and a half years, and during that time, every year, in our evaluations, both fiscally and academically, we have been meeting expectations of the California Department of Education and the State Board of Education. And as we've grown from 45 students to nearly 1,000, we've not shied away from proudly being a public school that serves all students from all backgrounds. That means taking in more economically disadvantaged students, and now serving 20%, 200 students with special needs. That's four times more students than we even had enrolled in our first year of being a school. And we did all that without compromising the quality of education for each child. You have 400 pages of data in front of you, but I wanted to point out a couple of them, and that is the fact that even though, when you look at the overall scores of 1,000 students, that data is really confusing, but when you look at each year and the cohort data for that year, you see every student growing and increasing. Steve told you a story of just one kid, but our kindergartners, on average, grow a year and a half in both math and English. I mean, that is a phenomenal trajectory to set kids on. Our African-American students, when it comes to college reading readiness, outperform all other students by 5% in growth, and that's magical. It's hard, and it's well worth your support, so we are really grateful to be here today and look forward to becoming a school of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the 10-minute time allocation for those in support. Now, we allow 10 minutes for the speakers that are submitted speakers to speak in opposition. Please come forward and speak in any order. As a group, you have 10 minutes. Claire Crawford, Bill McLean, Scott Mullin, Sidney Romell, and Keisha Borden. And your 10-minute time will begin when the first person starts speaking.
Okay, my name is Claire Crawford with In the Public Interest, and I am here to testify. I submitted yesterday a research brief to all the board members. Hopefully, you've gotten a chance to see it, but just going to summarize our findings. We looked at some of the academic performance metrics for Thrive, and the academics' performance gives us extremely severe concern when looking at comparable schools. So one thing that we looked at first was, in their petition, they compared their outcomes for their total student population to the outcomes of several other schools that actually do not in fact have similar student populations. And even looking at those numbers, if you look at performance for subgroups, when you break it out by looking at, our brief focuses on socio-economically disadvantaged students, English-language learners, African-American students, and Latino students. And while comparing total population has Thrive, you know, on the higher end in English Language Arts, and, you know, towards the middle, lower in math, when you break it out by subgroups, they're at the bottom, the dead bottom in Medi-Cat... by subgroups, they're at the bottom, the dead bottom in medicat categories, and very close to the bottom in all the rest. I then looked at and did a little bit of analysis, looking at distance from Level 3, which is something that is on the dashboard and that the state often looks at. We found similar results there. And then, in addition, because the student populations of the comparison schools really were not similar to Thrive's student population, we looked at schools that we were able to find that had more similar populations. Now, the metric we used was looking at percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged and percentage of ELL. And comparing to those schools for total student population, Thrive performs worse than every single one of those schools and significantly worse in math. It also performs at the bottom of those schools in every single subgroup, in both ELA and math. These numbers are very concerning. In addition to that, while a lot of their data was not available for previous years, their overall percentage of the met or exceeded standards with the CASP has gone down significantly from their first year in operation to this year in operation. It's been lower than the district's, and while the district has gone up, their numbers have gone down. And just to give an example of, you know, the Empower Charter School that you just heard from, which performs overall better than Thrive, as does O'Farrell, as does Learning Choice Academy, when you look at Empower from its first year, which is the same year as Thrive's, to now, Empower's numbers have gone up, you know, consistently. Thrive's numbers, on the other hand, have gone down year to year and down significantly in math. So what is also of major concern is they have extremely rapid growth plans, which concerns me about how much is being, attention is being paid to academic performance versus growth. And so our recommendations is we'd like to make sure that the analysis the district does actually includes an actual set of similar schools for comparisons, so paying very careful attention to the school population when you make that comparison, and paying deep attention to the performance of those subgroups, socio-economically disadvantaged, African-American, Latino, and English language learners. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin, President Beiser, and members of the San Diego School Board. My name is Bill McLean, and I teach 4th grade at Carver Elementary. For the past three years, we have shared our campus with Thrive Charter School. I have letters from my 4th graders who are concerned about the lack of respect and responsibility shown to us as we share our campus. We have gone through the usual channels of communication, contacting our principal, who discusses our concerns with the leader of Thrive. Still, issues of respect and student safety are numerous in the first four weeks of school. I'm concerned about the rest of the year. Agreements between the two schools about boundaries are often ignored by Thrive students. Last year, during our S-Back testing, one of their older students ran over and pounded on my window twice. We have had several incidents of students wandering over to our new garden and picking tomatoes, all during instructional time, right out in front of my window. Older 6th grade students have taunted and cursed at our students, not only, not so subtly showing the middle finger as they walked by and throwing water balloons at our primetime students. Last week, we had an incident that, to this day, still upsets me on several levels. There is a young Thrive student who is often seen wandering on our side of the school. He is followed by an eight or two a short distance behind him. Last Friday, while my students were lined up in front of the room next door, the student ran up to them and started throwing rocks, hitting three of my students and just missing our 3rd grade teacher. Three students were hit by the rocks and several more with dirt. Our 3rd grade, sorry, when our principal came to intervene, rocks were thrown at her as well. This is not the only time this student has thrown rocks at Carver students. Our BSS told me that there have been several incidents during lunch when the young student was throwing rocks at Carver students. I realize that the bureaucracy of special education can be frustrating. However, I'm not sure who was monitoring high cases, high case students at Thrive. In fact, I'm not sure who was monitoring Thrive students at all. I know that they have a new leader each year, and teacher turnover is high. I don't recognize any teachers from last year. In the past three years, I have never seen or heard a Thrive student say they were sorry or deliver an apology to my class. It makes me wonder who is holding these students accountable for their behavior. In conclusion, I am concerned about my student's safety and the interruptions of learning time as a result of Thrive being so close on our physical side. In the last month, since the beginning of school, is any occasion of the upcoming year, it will be a frustrating and challenging year. Please do something about this situation before someone gets hurt. Thank you.
I'd like to refer those concerns to the superintendent for follow-up.
My name is Sidney Romell. I'm a math teacher at Mann Middle School. I'm here to ask the district to take a deep look at Thrive Charter and the safety of their students. I have real concerns about the safety of students at the 59th Street Campus and Thrive's aggressive marketing as a high-performing school. I think, I see Thrive students every morning, unsupervised on the sidewalks, climbing the fences today. Last week, laying in the gutter between the sidewalk and 54th. It is a very, very busy intersection, and I see absolutely no adult supervision before school when I am entering the Mann Middle School campus. My school, Mann, is significantly better at serving high-needs, low-income, and English learners. Thrive growth comes at a cost to their students and our local schools. When we receive former Thrive students, it is apparent that they were not held to rigorous 6th grade math standards. All schools should be held to the same standards, and the impact to our communities should be taken into deep consideration. Thank you.
My name is Scott Mohn. I'm a teacher at the Language Academy, which is a local public school. I have serious concerns about Thrive Charter School, the safety and education of their students, and their aggressive growth strategy that seems to be at the expense of their existing students. The letter I will read to you is from a former Thrive parent, parent whose student now attends Point Loma High School. I'm going to read the second half of it in the interest of time. As a parent, I noticed my son spent very little time doing academics on a daily basis. Every day, students have a half-hour social-emotional period, the 90-minute flex class, which is extracurricular subjects, plus a study group class to work on Summit, the online curriculum, which the teachers do not teach. It is the student's responsibility to learn the material and take content assessment quizzes on top of whatever else is being taught in the class. At some point in the day, math, English, and some form of science will be taught. For high school government, the students were offered a three-week crash course to learn the subject. When holding Thrive accountable to students' education, their school motto is, "We don't always get it right." At the recent high school orientation in late August of this year, parents sat in an unorganized room with boxes stacked along the walls, wires hanging down from multiple areas, where ceiling tiles were missing, and listening to Thrive promote college for all students. When mentioning how my 10th-grade son did not currently have the academic skills to attend college, or even a trade school for that matter, they responded that some students could show their knowledge of material learned by doing a performance piece or writing a poem. I shared how I would prefer to have them teach my child the academic skills so he could get into college. Lastly, during orientation, parents were given a staff directory. Out of the 19 personnel listed, only seven staff members were teachers. I'm going to cut this short here. She says at the end of the letter, "My son is now happily attending Point Loma High School." Her name is Tammy Chesser. I request that the district investigate student turnover at Thrive and that you investigate how many high-needs students at Thrive have been pushed out or are not being served adequately. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes your 10-minute time allocation for speaking against. Any board member comments or questions? Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
I guess my initial concern is, do we have a mechanism in place to address ongoing concerns? This is at the end of five years, right?
Yes, you're in the process.
Right. Are there ongoing mechanisms in place to address some of the concerns that are here tonight? Or is this, I mean, just bring it tonight?
Thank you. So this is, this is the public hearing, and so this is the first that I'm hearing of a lot of these concerns. The State Board of Ed authorized this charter school, and when they authorize a charter school, the oversight is delegated to the CDE staff to perform those duties. And so that staff should be made aware of it, and we can share the information. We can also review all of the reports and oversight visits that they have done for the charter school. Moving forward, if, if this board at the action date, which will occur in November, if this board votes to authorize the charter, we would take over oversight as of July 1, 2019. And so then, if approved, we would begin conducting all of those oversight visits and taking all of this information into consideration. With it being authorized by the State Board of Ed, we see very, very little of their data. Nothing comes to us automatically like it would for some of our authorized charter schools. We'd have to try and request it from the school or from the current authorizer.
Related to that, though, we, we're coexisting here. Our schools are interfacing, I mean, do we kind of serve as a mediator or facilitator to ongoing issues that, I mean, it just seems like we should have some role in that because we are responsible for the kids in our schools, and even if the state has responsibility for, for this charter, who's serving to ensure that?
So the, yeah, currently, the oversight process as it's written and implemented by the authorizers, it rests with the authorizer. So there's no automatic sharing of information that occurs. Like I said, we would have to, every time we hear of something, we would have to reach out to the school or to the CDE staff to try and follow up with it. We have reached out to the school on a couple of occasions over the last four, four and a half years that they've been operating. They have been responsive to us, but it, the authorization or the oversight duties rests with the authorizer. So we don't, we don't, like, we wouldn't have a right to say necessarily, if we got a complaint, our steps would be, we have to refer it to their authorizer. We wouldn't step in to correct the issue because we don't authorize them right now. I agree with you that there should be more collaboration, but it's a very kind of set pattern that authorization and oversight follows.
And I understand that, but I'm saying that if our students, if something, if something happened to our students, just a pure safety issue, if there's something going on and our children are there, who is, I mean, do you call the San Diego Police or, I mean, what? It just seems like, it's crazy. It's not making any sense to me that we would have our students there as defined by San Diego Unified, and we're responsible for their safety, for their operation, et cetera. And on the same campus, if any other group were on our campus, we would want to be sure that everybody's safe. And yet, we're saying that because it's the state, even though they're on our campus, that in that instance, we refer it to the state. I'll work through it, I'm sorry. Just not being.
Dr. Evans?
Right. And I guess in response to that, if they are approved, then there would be a more direct response at this point. I'm not going to make any comments about the pro and con on the petition at this point. I just received, seen for the first time this information from the, in the public interest, and some of the comments were made, whereas we had a lot of information from the petitioners ahead of time, and I hope that certainly the charter office would, would take into account all the different information that's provided and giving us some feedback because we can't, obviously, this is just a hearing, and we can't come to any conclusions just looking at what appears to be conflicting data. So I think, and I think this added issue of the fact that it was authorized by the state is going to require more, more study and diligence on our part, because in the other cases, we've had a, you know, an ongoing relationship with them and have kept up on what's going on. So, I mean, I, I just want to keep an open mind about this and gather all the information and be fully prepared for when we actually meeting to vote on it. I mean, we have, just for example, on the issue of academic performance, there are two different narratives are going on here, and I want time to digest all that.
Thank you. Yes, when it comes back for the November action date, that's the meeting, staff will have prepared a comprehensive analysis. We will have gone through the entire charter document with a fine-tooth comb, looking at the stuff that they are reporting and items that are in there. We also conduct, while we look at what they have reported, we also conduct our own independent analysis of the, the academic data. So that will be a comprehensive look that includes school-wide, subgroup, comparison schools, everything will be in there.
Any other board member comments or questions on this information item during the public hearing before us?
Sure.
Dr. McQuarrie?
Yeah, so I also want to make sure that we're taking a look at the records that are available, concerned about the, the relationship that we're having with, with our schools that are sharing, that are co-occupying space. But it's not so much the issues involved in co-occupying a space, but it's how issues are resolved between those two partners. I would, would want to get some more information on, on how that has transpired over, over the, over the years. I know they've been with Lindavista, I mean, with, with Carver, and we want, we want to work at that. What I also want to acknowledge, though, is the, the schools embracing the Lindavista community and, and the positive relationship that they're working with the community there and, and the positive partnership they have with Bayside Community Center, and they just opened up their, their new facility. So it's, it's a bright, bright space with great community involvement and, and community support. So the, we've got that, that going for them. The concern I have is, was also mentioned, the rapid, I think it was mentioned by one of the speakers, it's the rapid growth, moving from 45 to 1,000 kids, and, and that's, that's tough for, for anyone to make that kind of a transition, to be able to maintain quality, quality program as you're expanding numbers of, of students that you're, you're servicing. So I think that's, that's a caution, maybe just going back to maybe what O'Farrell has done. They've basically settled in, they're not growing, they're, they're establishing and working that out. I think a number of our charters have decided this is, these are the students we want to serve, this is our student population, this is our community, and they're making it work within those parameters. So, you know, maybe Thrive is, is taking a look at, at what they can do within, within a period of time and not sacrificing the program over, over growth. I do have concerns with the, it does come from the, from the data, trustee Evans, that when I, I took, I sort of alluded it to it in other comments that I made with other charters, we do a, if you do the potential data checks between the school and then their comparison groups across Language Arts and Math, there are so many targets you can get, take a look at the, where they are, are they better than or lower than what their, their comparison group is by geography, and are they better than or lower than their comparison group by like, like population? And when I did the numbers on, on that, and it kind of pops out here on, on page, on page 12 of their, of their document, it shows Thrive School and their scores as compared to the other groups by geography, as well as, as, by schools that students would otherwise attend, as well as similar populations. And their potential 56 data points, so they can either be above or below. And the, and I see Thrive is, is above in terms of their comparison schools in only 16%, and they're lower than, you know, significantly lower than the others. In terms of comparing the students with similar population, it's at 13 out of 48 data points, and, and they're, that's 13 out of 48 data points, and so it's at like a 27% better than that comparison group. So it's data that I think we want to look at, and we think we want to go, go deep. This is not a new charter, it's not one that we, that this district chose to authorize, and I think that also speaks to an issue that happens when a district doesn't authorize a charter, and then it gets authorized by the state. Who oversees that? And so I think we've got, we've had those efforts, and I understand... And so I think we've got, we've had those efforts and I understand that by choosing to, to charter the school with us, it gives us the opportunity to oversee that charter and, and to, and to work with them on improving the areas that need to be addressed. So I think it's data that we have to look at and appreciate the opportunity to share that.
Thank you. Any other board member comments or questions? Okay. And again, this information will be processed as a result of the public hearing and staff will bring forward. Recommendation will, as a board, look at the data and analyze it and not just for Thrive, but for the other schools that we heard this evening and then make a decision on the renewal of those charters. But I do want to, you know, just follow up with the superintendent and make sure that the specific student safety concerns that were voiced at tonight's board meeting are followed up. And I know I could probably have a commitment from Nicola Sisi to partner and make sure that those issues are looked into and addressed. Would you speak to that, please?
Absolutely. You know, I think what's surprising to me is that I didn't hear of a single of those issues. So sitting here and having people talk about all the concerns they have and not have a single person talk to me or my principals that I reached out to just now, that's unfortunate. But we will absolutely, I mean, kid safety, whether it's Thrive students, whether it's kids anywhere, I'm a mom, like, I want kids to be safe. And not to tell somebody when you feel like a kid is not safe is not okay. And so we absolutely will work incredibly hard to keep all children safe and to build relationships. On multiple occasions, facility staff have shared with us, San Diego Unified facility staff have told us like, hey, you're like the dream collaboration, like, I hear nothing but great things from the principal on your side and the principal at the district school. So I don't know what else to tell you other than to encourage you to please also speak to your facilities and auxiliary services staff because I'm not sure that everybody's receiving the same information, but I would love that information. You 100% have my guarantee that if there are students that are not behaving appropriately, we will hold them accountable, we will work with them, and student safety is our top priority.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And now at this point in time, I'm not sure if the Learning Trace Academy is here. Do you have any students, Learning Trace Academy? Nope? Okay. So we'll go back to the original agenda where we left off. And we'll now begin into public participation on non-agenda testimony. We have six speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak on non-agenda public items, starting with Citizen, followed by Maxine, Francine Maxwell, Andrea Russell, John Lau, Loxy Gant, and Mary Ann Hawk. Citizen, can you please come forward? If you're able to swim against the tide? Francine Maxwell? You have two minutes, ma'am.
The Honorable Minister Farrakhan stated, "There is something brewing. It's time to stand up and take a personal stand as well as collaborative stand for the betterment of our people." I went to the back-to-school night at Morris High School on Thursday. I went to over 20 rooms that were closed and locked. Those teachers were not in the quad. It was a beautifully decorated quad with motorcycles and there was low riders and many activities. I only found one teacher that was respectful enough to the community to leave a note and she said, "I'm sorry I missed you." After 20 rooms. I went with my neighbors who's Latino, we went to 10 of her rooms and we went to another 10 for an Asian student that lives in our community. So I want the district to understand that there's something in their contract where teachers know that they're supposed to be at back-to-school night. Completely understand that people have to call in sick, they take classes, they're to better their education at night, but we all knew. So I should have been able to walk around Morris High School and find 20 notes on the doors that I went to, but I was only able to find one. And so I also went over to Crawford and had a fabulous time with their pep rally on Friday. And the staff need to be applauded at Crawford. When that bell rung, those staff members are dressed in Crawford colors, they're standing at the door even till the tardy bell comes. And so I wanted to applaud the leadership at Crawford and the fact that the teachers are spirited on Friday and we need to model some of that around the campus. And also I wanted to make sure that the superintendent, it's been brought to my attention and I could be wrong and it's not a problem to be wrong, that you haven't visited Valencia Park. And I think if there's an opportunity, you need to see Valencia Park who lost their three-year grant on a space-hand discovery lab. It has a 3D printer in there that none of my children are using in the community, so there's an equity issue.
Citizen, you have two minutes.
So Sharon Whitehurst Payne stood up there and talked about how concerned she is about school safety. And I listened to a bunch of union members say, "Oh, we're all concerned about student safety." And let me tell you, I'm pretty shocked considering how many lawsuits that are going because we've got teachers in our schools abusing kids. And these teachers that came up here and complained about all these so-called juvenile delinquents at Thrive are saying, "Oh my God, the kids aren't safe. The kids aren't safe in their own schools." That's the truth. And we've got a legal department over here saying that we're going to have less outside counsel, but they were in court today and they were trying to put a restraining order on a father that cried when he testified today. Now, I would advise him to testify under restraining order, but he did because he wanted to tell the truth. And the judge believed him. When all these other employees were saying this and that and this and that. Why? Because Carmina Duran, who started at $114,000 in 2014 and is now making $154,400 and she has no college degree, said, "Let's have a staff meeting, talk about this incident." And from the time they went to, I wasn't afraid then, to I'm afraid now, wow. So you guys are spending tens of thousands of dollars defending lawsuits instead of having Cindy Martin do her job and change the culture in this school district so that our children are truly safe? And employees that come up here and tell me, "We care about the, the children and their safety," come on. School of Creative and Performing Arts, a $2 million incident because a teacher was having sex with a student and it just happened again. $2.1 million this year, five years later, it's still going on. So tell me, where is your concern about the safety of children when it's going on under your noses? Really? A teacher can have sex with a student 100 times in first period and no other teacher said anything? Get real.
Andrea Russell?
My name is Andrea Russell and I'm a San Diego mom with strong concerns regarding the enrollment requirements of the Transitional Kindergarten TK Program. I'm very familiar with the history of the program and the historical reasons for its implementation, as I'm sure you are as well, so in the interest of time, I'll skip ahead. We are very much aware of the program's many advantages. In fact, the district's website devotes pages of information describing the many benefits of receiving this additional year of education. But I can tell you that parents of the disadvantaged 75% of four-year-olds who are denied enrollment are less enthused. The state of California itself must have recognized the same inequity as well as realizing the irrelevancy of the now moot birth date requirement because only a few years later they updated the law with the amendment to the Education Code. This code allows for the school district to enroll a child whose birth date is after the December 2nd during the same year if two conditions are met. One, if the parent is informed of it, and two, if the governing board of the school district or school determines that admittance is in the best interest of the child. I'm here today with respect to that second condition. How do I go about obtaining the endorsement of the governing board yourselves indicating the admittance of my child to TK next year is in his best interest? To deny him entrance based on an arbitrary now irrelevant birth date deadline is to deny him what is in his best educational interest. There are exceptions made, the amendment allows for it, and the school board should and has done so as well, especially if the parent knows what's in his best interest of her child and is willing to advocate for that opportunity. I ask you today, what do I need to do to allow my child to enroll in TK? I am requesting the board look at our particular case independently and utilize this amendment provision. I'm hoping that you can provide me with a directional path or process by which I can undertake to seek allowance.
Thank you very much, ma'am. John Lau, followed by Loxy Gant, and hopefully Ms. Russell, the superintendent, will have staff follow up with you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Lau. I'm an 11th grader at Hitzekai Media Arts. I'd just like to say that I am very lucky to be attending this school, seeing that it's, you're getting into it by lottery system as well, it's a project-based school, which is very suitable for my personal style of learning. I am pursuing a military career in the near future and my school does not offer a JRTC program, which led me to seek out various opportunities for leadership programs and resulted in me going to Point Loma High School's Navy JRTC. Point Loma High School's Navy JRTC program has been benefiting me with having me learn to develop leadership skills, a sense of camaraderie, community service, and a lot, and pertinent preparations for a military career path. So my school does not offer these programs, which is why I sought out a different school's program, seeing that it's 10 minutes away by walking from my school. So recently I came across the fact that cross-enrollment was no longer a thing, so I was just, in this regard and everything I have said, I was just going to respectfully request the board to reconsider reinstating cross-enrollment. So I look forward to hearing a response from you so that I may continue with my programs.
Thank you, Mr. Lau. I appreciate your comments about cross-enrollment. Next is Loxy Gant, followed by Mary Ann Hawk. You have two minutes.
We are undergoing a national conversation right now in the media and in our political atmosphere about sexual misconduct and crimes against women and children. In fact, there's a hashtag gaining precedence right now called #WhyIdidn'tReport. As a victim of sexual assault by a teacher at La Jolla High School, I can't use that hashtag because I did report. I immediately, right after the assault happened, I spoke to the kid that sat next to me, then my next teacher, and then the principal. And then the principal called in an investigator and I wrote a report and I drew a diagram and I did everything that was asked of me by that investigator. And when he said, "Are you just doing this because of the others?" My heart broke. I was not doing it because of the others and I had no idea. There's a problem in your district when kids come forward and they are not believed and they are not given the right to speak for themselves and they are not believed because you put the teachers over the students. I sent you all an email tonight with my contact information and an article that was written today in Voice of San Diego. So I ask if you please talk to me. I would love to tell you how we could take step forwards to prevent incidents like mine from occurring. And now I have a three-year-old daughter and she'll have to go to San Diego Unified and I don't feel safe sending her to school. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did get your email, as I'm sure other board members did, and I look forward to sitting down, having coffee or tea with you. Thank you. Next is Mary Ann Hawk. You have two minutes.
My name is Dr. Mary Ann Hawk and I'm Chair of the Gate District Advisory Committee. I'm a resident of Claremont and I'd like to congratulate three of our neighborhood schools that won Coisen Awards. I want to congratulate Alcott Principal Michelle Riley, Hawthorne Principal Lauren Robinson, and Alcott, and Field Principal Amy Griffiths. These principals demonstrate how small neighborhood schools can provide quality leadership and teaching and foster diversity, strong parent and community involvement, and high expectations for student achievement. Let's not forget to recognize the school's wonderful support staff as well. All three schools have quality Gate programs that are supported by their principals. These schools provide access to broad and challenging curriculum in literature, math, languages, and science. Innovative teaching allows every student to stretch and make a year's worth of academic growth even when they already meet grade-level expectations. These students share in school projects like school gardens, perform for the public in choirs, dance, poetry, and theater. Through a supportive classroom environment, challenging curriculum, and attention to individual learning styles, these schools support a social-emotional development of gifted children who march to a different drummer and don't fit well in the regular classroom. Parents of Gate often tell me that attending schools like these becomes a life-changing, positive experience for their struggling student and their families. Gate services allow them to stay in their neighborhood schools and act of part of a vibrant community instead of leaving for charter or private schools. So congratulations, thank you to these schools for continuing to support the special needs of gifted students in our community. You create a very supportive and welcoming environment that makes our neighborhood schools the heart of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we move on to Section E in our agenda, the Report of Closed Session Actions and Superintendent, Board, and ASB President Information Reports. Report of Closed Session Actions, are there any actions to report out at this time, Ms. Green?
No.
All right. Onto administrative assignments, Superintendent Cindy Martin.
Thank you, President Advisory. I have four management appointments tonight. Vice Principal for Claremont High School, Sarah Thomas; Vice Principal for Knox Middle School, Angelica Weisso Garcia; Principal at Jerobek Elementary School, Dr. Angela Ornisi Watkins; and Principal at Marvin Elementary School, Armando Tovar Jr.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of those leaders in our district that have received new appointments. Now we move on to the Associated Student Body, or ASB Presidents' Report. Student ASB presidents representing themselves, please introduce yourself and tell us about what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. Marco Abbiati, the ASB President of Sarah High School in Tierra Santa. Marco?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Sorry that I arrived late. I had a college class, so I came straight from there.
Nice college class, sweet.
Yeah, Calculus III at Miramar College, so that's fun. My name is Marco Abbiati and I'm from Sarah High School. I'm the president there and I want to talk about some things that are happening at Sarah. So the first thing that I have is homecoming, which is on October 13th from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. At the dance, we're going to have $1 churros and $1 tacos. And this week, or this past weekend, we actually decorated all the halls to go along with our Halloween theme. It's called Fright Night. And we also added a section in the halls for Day of the Dead to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, which is going on until the 15th of October. And the next thing that I have from Sarah High School is the Dog Pound, which is our student section at the athletic events. And this year we're competing and we're hoping to win the CIF Battle of the Fans. So basically, our spirit section is going to like create a video and we submit it to CIF and hopefully we can win that. Now moving on to more like academics and administration, the counselors, deans, and vice principals. This year we switched to by class, so that way the adults have four years to build rapport with the students and they can get to know them a little bit better. Also, another exciting thing from Sarah is that our enrollment went up for the first time in years, so we get to hire a new teacher. And finally, I'll leave you with a message from the principal about instructional goals. So we have five instructional goals in five years. Last year, the goal was engagement in the classroom and this year it's all about assessing students in various ways. Teachers have developed a guaranteed viable curriculum and are now engaging in ways to assess if students are learning and making meaning of material. They also meet as a staff and individually with the principal to talk about data, making meaning of it, and what to do when students don't get it. That's it from Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to report about the girls' lacrosse team or field hockey team?
Yeah. So the field hockey team tends to win the CIF championships, so we're hoping to win again this year.
Tend to win.
Yes. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, Cynthia Tobato, ASB President of Mission Bay High School, had to leave.
But I can add a little bit to that.
Okay.
Cynthia had to leave. She had a time certain that she had to be out here in order to get home on time. But she will submit a written report and I ask that her written report be submitted into the record.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. We move on to Superintendent Information Reports. Superintendent Cindy Martin?
Thank you. It's maybe not fair that I'm going to go first because I, I'm sure at least one or two of your colleagues will want to share the same information about the exciting time that we had. It was more than exciting.
Do you have any pictures?
Yes. The pictures are going to be coming up on the screen.
Did you share any of the pictures I posted?
With John Lewis.
With me and, okay, never mind.
I'm going to talk about the event that we had at Morris High School this past week with Congressman John Lewis, where he spoke directly with Congressman John Lewis, where he spoke directly to our students. You can see some of the pictures back here, and the students, we announced, KPBS in San Diego announced his book, March, which is a graphic novel, as the One Book One San Diego Book Selection of the Year, and all of the 11th grade students who study U.S. history had that book, studied it when school started, and were able to hear directly from this inspirational leader on the civil rights movement. And we know, as a district, we study social justice and equality in its historical context and in its current context. And not only for us, is it not only a content area for history and social science where we get access through this book, but the students got to hear firsthand. And when he got up to speak to the kids, you could hear a pen drop. You see the photo in the, or the picture in the background is artwork that we also integrated arts, all in the background. The art students drew pictures and used various forms of art expression to promote voting and what it means to vote and to use your voice, and the congressman shared in that and talked about how important that is. We know that literacy is a primary driver of our democracy, and a literate populace, a populace that is littered in multiple literacy forms, math literacy, science literacy, how to get along with one another is a form of literacy, artistic literacy, of course, reading, writing, and the traditional literacies. We believe that multiple literacies are important to be successful, and we were able to have this, this event by the, excuse me, give our students the ability to learn and then converse with one of the primary drivers and leaders of the civil rights movement, and to hear it through the lens of somebody who lived it and helped shape the conversations that the kids are now having in their classrooms today was quite inspirational. I know that we had many people join us. We had the Secretary of State of California, Alex Padilla, was there. He issued a proclamation that day, and also talked about the importance of voting, and there's a picture of him issuing the proclamation. You can tell the students knew that this was something they were experiencing and living history, and I want to thank the entire instructional team who all put this event together for us, and to name everybody by name would be too many, but it was a coordinated effort by the instructional team to make this not just an event where the students got to hear from an inspirational speaker and national leader, but they, it was part of the curriculum, it was part of an integrated study that the kids did, and a life-changing and a memory of a lifetime that the kids will have forever. So, I thank the whole team for putting it together and to hear directly from these authors that were at our campus. And then, that evening, John Lewis spoke downtown to promote the One Book One San Diego Event. It was a free event, the most widely attended, 20, almost 2,000 people attended it, and we know our students have access to this book as a supplemental material. You all, as a board, took action, and we have this book available as a classroom resource that our students can learn to use to learn living history. So, that's my report for this week.
Thank you. Next is the Board Information Reports. Let's begin with Dr. McQuary. Do you have anything to report out, sir?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I also was at the Morris High School Assembly where we brought in the junior class, so, and United States Congresswoman member Susan Davis was there as well, and what a civic learning event it was, very authentic. It did encourage students to register early, because they can register, get ready to, at 16, to get organized, to be informed, and to vote when they reached 18. I also was with the Mission Bay Cluster Schools when they performed at the Chinese Moves Festival at Balboa Park, and they gave incredible performances in English and in Chinese and in American Sign Language. I did some school tours. I visited Cavode and Thrive, and did some school and parent meetings, Hoover and Crawford. We had a great, great turnout with Vice President Sharon Whitehurst Payne was there with me, and met with the Crown Point Junior Music Academy, who did a parent overview of their curriculum and what music is about in their school and why it's at the core of their curriculum, and also attend the La Jolla Cluster Meeting. Couple of civic meetings I wanted to mention. I attended the San Diego Planning Commission when the Discovery Center that's going, was being planned at Grant Park in the, in the San Diego River Park area was presented. I was invited to make a statement in support of that. I did, and we did get a unanimous approval of all members on that commission. So, we're really excited about what's happening in the, in the San Diego River Park area and in. Also, I attended the San Diego Park and Recreation Board, where, again, we got a unanimous approval of the PB Elementary School Joint Use Agreement, a project that we're doing, as well as the Lindbergh-Sweitzer Elementary School Joint Use Park they're doing with the, in our partnership with the city. So, great, very busy work, and happy to be here. Love to continue.
Thank you. Trustee Richard Barrera is passing. Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
My colleague Mike reported on the Crawford-Hoover event. That was memorable to me because of the student dialogue. We heard from the students. They shared their concerns, and they were going to invite me out to hear some of their concerns directly, so I'm looking forward to that. The Morris event was one of those lifetime memorable experiences, and it was about the students, it was the whole package. It was, we had the books, they studied the books, they were in classes, they came to the event, they heard the speaker, they heard the congressman, they were feeling it, they put it all together as a package. It was an awesome experience to, I mean, it was life-changing to see the children engaged and to really be there with the congressman, to feel his experience. It was like magic, and to me, that's a prototype, a model of what we can do in the future. I heard the students in your report saying that it needs to be relevant, it needs to be connected to something that they are doing, and that was the whole package for them. They read about it, but then they got to meet the person who experienced it. I just hope we can do more of that in the school district so that all children can experience that kind of learning. And then, I want to end with a comment about Johnson. Lincoln is, we were doing some planning for that cluster meeting group, and I'm really excited about the plans that we're putting together with the cluster chair and the principals and so forth, but I want to comment on Johnson. On yesterday, we were at Johnson, and there's a level of excitement and engagement that's going on there that I would invite you all to go out and see. Thank you.
Dr. Evans?
I'll pass. To move on to the next.
Okay, yeah, I just have a couple of things to report. First of all, I had a great time at the AASD Casino Night fundraiser to benefit student scholarships. That was a lot of fun, and we weren't gambling, because it was funny money, so, but it was a great benefit and a wonderful evening with all of our, members of our AASD bargaining unit. Second, I had a great time at the evening with Annette Benning with Dr. Evans, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, Richard, Trustee Barrera, and Superintendent Cindy Martin, as well as other folks that were there. It was really exciting to meet Annette Benning, who is an alum, alumnus of Patrick Henry High School and Pershing Middle School, and then also attended drama at Mesa College. With my husband of almost 14 years, Dan Mock, took drama classes with her at Mesa College, and they also worked together at the Old Globe, as well as their classmate, Dave Hibbler. So, that was a real treat for, for us all to get to meet Annette Benning. On Saturday, I was, I made my runway debut as a model for the 14th Annual Macy's Strut for Sobriety Fashion Show Luncheon, and I want to thank all the people that turned out for that fundraiser, especially Dr. Walter Monk of UCSD Notoriety. I'd like to also thank Superintendent Cindy Martin, Principal Listy Gillingham, and all the staff that responded in a very timely manner to make sure that the air conditioning at Patrick Henry High School was up and running after we had several reports that they were having AC problems in multiple buildings. So, thank you very much to all the staff that was involved in getting that fixed. And then, Sunday evening, I attended the Freedom Awards honoring Senator Chris Keigho and the current Senator Pro Tem, President Tony Atkins. They were both awarded and recognized for fighting for equality and also for fighting for responsive government. And then, most recently, I just had a meeting in La Jolla with a lot of folks in the neighborhood with La Jolla Elementary School, and I forwarded some of those concerns to Dr. McQuary. All right, that concludes Board Information Reports. Let's go ahead and move on to G, the Board Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move the agenda.
We have a motion by Dr. Evans and a second by Trustee Barrera. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Of note is, on the consent agenda is recognizing Filipino-American Heritage Month, LGBTQIA History Month, and National Bullying Prevention Month, or as I like to say, National Kindness Month. Onto Item H, the Operational Matters Reserved for the Board. Item H1 is a report on Vision 2020, Quality Schools in Every Neighborhood, and the adoption of a resolution to begin the vision for 2030 development process. This is an action item. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Dr. Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second from Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Trustee Evans and Barrera, please present the item.
So I can look at everybody. Okay, I'm excited to do this presentation. We just saw the video earlier, because we're talking about words, but these are actually real students that have been going through our system. These students, I started talking with them, and when they were at Bernie and moved on to Roosevelt Middle School and then on to San Diego High School, the Bernie principal came up to me and said, "Four of those students were mine." So, the track to graduation begins in kindergarten, TK, and even before that. This presentation is just a start. This is a dress rehearsal. Basically, we need to be presenting this to the Chamber of Commerce, to the Labor Council, to all the PTAs, and everybody in town to know what's, what's going on in our district over the last several years. So, just moving along here, if I can work this right, Vision 2020, you can see, has been approved by the Boards of Education when Richard Barrera and I came on in 2008 and 2009, and it has also been adopted and supported by every board member since then, Trustee Visery, who came on in 2010, and then later, Dr. McQuary and Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Now, when we envisioned 2020, we had a lot of meetings and talk about it, but we weren't really trying to come up with something complete, a new educational fad or something. We already knew what works, and so, we knew what works is involve parents, affecters, teachers collaborating with each other, principals and superintendents supporting them, individualized intention, and very clearly, a broad and challenging curriculum with, with equity so it's equally spread across the district. And so, we came up with our Vision 2020 under San Diego, our vision for educational excellence, and what did we talk about? We talked about having measures of success that went beyond simple test scores, having college prep and career tech together, having closer ties to the neighborhood, effective teaching, and again, the support and accountability. A lot of people at the time said, "Well, this is just a pipe dream. You're just talking about fancy things." And so, what we decided to do was actually take action on this, and one of the things we did was, I hit too, too hard, too fast, okay. Okay, there's one that was missing, but anyway, one of the things we decided to do was we need to develop a plan first and a superintendent second. Some people have considered the most important job of the school board is to hire a superintendent, but I think that's the second. The first is to develop a plan by the community for what we want to accomplish in our schools, and then find a superintendent that matches up with that, which is what we did when we, we hired Cindy Martin, who had created a quality school in a high-needs neighborhood when she was the principal at Central Elementary. We said we want to take that to scale. And so, you can see here on the timeline, the first few years, we were having community meetings, we had a lot of budget crises, and so therefore, there were a lot of community meetings, but we were planning and talking and debating about what was most important in our schools. I mean, one thing that came out consistently, see, was we wanted lower-class sizes, and we've maintained some of the lowest class sizes in the state. And so, by 2013, when we brought in a new superintendent, we had these words on paper, but we were able to begin to operationalize it and have a real way to insert it into the culture of the district, and during the last couple of years, we actually began to see some of the results as a result of what we've been doing, and it's going to accelerate just that much more in the next couple of years. So, we have this brochure, which is Vision 2020 for Quality Schools in Every Neighborhood, and I went through this, this document, and I was very pleasantly surprised by going through line item by line item in terms of, you can't read very well up there, but students will have a blend of college prep and career technical courses, critical creative thinkers, ability to communicate in two languages, aligning the curriculum across the K to 12, having meaningful graduation and access to technology and so forth. And we went through line by line and saw how much we had actually accomplished during this time period. There's so many things that we're just talking here about the tip of the iceberg, and I just broke it down into 10 areas, but there could be many other areas that we could look at. A few things that stand out, I mean, the transformation of our high schools from, from what they were before, our improved teaching by developing an evaluation tool for, for teachers, expanding our world languages, and all we did in terms of getting the community involved in the clusters and, and our facilities and technology upgrades. So, we're going to go through these top 10 just very quickly and some of the highlights of them. And first of all, it's about student achievement, and we knew that to have high student achievement, you have to have high expectations. I mean, as a psychologist, I know if you have high expectations, you get better results, and low expectations, lower results, and, and, but the first step was make sure that across the district, there was a broad and challenging curriculum. Prior to 2009, we didn't have that. We had some high schools offering certain courses. It wasn't available at other high schools, and same thing, we had music at some schools, not music at other schools. So, you can see the things that are listed here. These are not new things. I mean, we've had college courses on our campus for, you know, 30 or 40 years, and lots of other things, world languages, but if you look on the right side, we have made it more universal than is happening at every high school. It's for all students. The athletics throughout the district, we're adding on new sports in the athletics programs. So, just to take one example of what's happening in a high school, the advanced placement courses, and I'm just taking a little snapshot here, from just a couple of years, from 2015 to 2017, we had about a 12% increase in the number of students who were taking AP courses, which was significant, but if you look below about the increase in the number of students in each of these groups, this is what closing the achievement or the opportunity gap is all about, having everybody increase, but having certain groups increase at a faster pace. So, you know, you can see here, Hispanic students at 25%, all the way up to students with IAPs at a 57% increase. But even to me, more important than the advanced placement courses is the fact of the college courses that we offer mostly on, on the high school campuses. Again, this has been around for many years, but, and we've been meeting for the last five or six years with the Community College Board, working on how we can coordinate what happens in high school and in college. And so, just taking this sample in 2015-16, where we had about 3,700 enrollments, and then just moving ahead two years, you can see those numbers, it had doubled just in that time, and, and many high schools across the district, so it was, it's much more equitably distributed. And even more impressive, in the current year, we don't have the exact numbers, but it's projected to be over 10,000, almost 11,000, which just triples what we had just a few years ago. And one of the things we said was, prior, when we had lower numbers of students taking these courses, it was primarily students, who, advanced students who were preparing to go to four-year universities, were getting a few credits from the community college, and we said, "Well, what about all the students who are actually going to go to community college? Why can't we get them hooked together before then?" And we're seeing some of the results right here. So, when you see at the top the items in italics, these are actual words from this document about what we said we would do, in this case, about critical and creative thinkers. I think we were leading the state and the nation in this, because a few years later, the nation and the state adopted the Common Core State Standards, which are based on critical thinking as opposed to the old rote learning, the fact that we have to, there's a plethora of information out there, but we have to have students who are capable of criticizing and analyzing information that they receive, not just, again, rote memorization. Now, now, we have lots of new programs and so forth, but we still have the basics in language arts, math, science, social studies, and so forth, and while we've said students are more than a standardized test score, we also pay attention to standardized test scores. That's one of many measures that we can look at. And so, from 2008 to 2012, we were using the CSTs, and you can see during that time period, over those four or five years, the increase in the number of students reaching the proficient level in all of those, and I just want to kind of call out science, which was at 57%. During those years, we were sort of in a transitional period as we began doing our planning. We didn't have a new out-of-town superintendent come in, and one of the things I say about urban superintendents is that they have the loyalty of And one of the things I say about urban superintendents is that they have the loyalty of professional athletes. They go from one gig to the next gig. I'm talking about superintendents who come from out of town. They say, "Forget what you've been doing. Here, we have a great new program. Drop that." And they get it running, and then they take off, and everyone is left holding the bag. One past Board Member referred to that as sort of a savior superintendent, that, you know, "Come and tell us what we must do, and then as you start doing it, we're going to argue with you all the time about that's not necessarily what we want." As I said before, we started with a plan and then hired a superintendent. Now, we have the CST scores here. There's a little note below about the SBAQ scores. We have a new baseline, so we can't compare the new scores to the old scores, but even in the first two years, there's been an incremental increase in the number of students proficient in both math and in English Language Arts. More recently, the National Report Card, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, came out with the news that of 25 large urban districts, San Diego Unified made the most gains of any of the districts on that list in the country. This is looking at a sample of fourth graders and eighth graders in terms, again, of English reading and math. But as I said, we're not just looking at the test score. There's all kinds of ways to measure student achievement. One of them is the ongoing proficiency scales. One outside observer who came into the district said one of the things he was most impressed by was the six-week teaching coaching cycles, where the teacher would set up what they wanted the students to learn during that time and measures they're going along and seeing where they were at the end of those six weeks, rather than just waiting until the end of the year to see what a standardized test score is. And you can see, there are many other measures other than the ones that are listed here. It was just recently mentioned in the LA Times that we had a pretty dramatic drop in suspensions. And obviously, if students are suspended, they're not going to be learning. So that's one improvement that we have made. Then there's community involvement, really getting our clusters organized. At the time, we came on to the Board back in 2008 and '09, there were about three or four active cluster councils across the district. These were people that had gotten organized because they were concerned about the schools in their neighborhood. They wanted to work with the district or get outside help. But since then, we have varying levels of activity in all of the clusters across the district. And here are written some of the things that we expect of the clusters, but the basic idea of the clusters is to promote the schools in their own neighborhood and to make a connection with the local community, and also to make sure that there's a smooth flow from kindergarten to 12th grade. So you don't offer a world language in elementary school, and then you don't follow it up in middle school or high school. Or if in high school, you have a particular specialization, you have preparation for it in the lower grades. And I think this year, we're going to see a lot going on in terms of tightening up what the clusters are doing, in terms of really focusing on how we can be very effective in improving the schools in our communities. Now, I was talking before about high schools. This is not your father's Buick. I think it was actually, this is not your father's Oldsmobile. I don't know what the commercial was. But anyway, actually, this picture, it turns out it's from Havana, Cuba. They drive in cars from the 1950s. So, the old way was two tracks. You're on the vocational track in high school, or you're on the college prep track. And so, at the end of that time, you can't really switch. You've already been destined to go one way or the other. And so, what the new way is blending career technical education and college prep. So in 2016, we made the default curriculum for all the students, the college prep curriculum, so they would have the choice to go to college. But at the same time, a lot of the career technical courses gained the acceptance of UC. They were reorganized so that they actually met the requirements for UC and CSU. So, the example I always give is if someone's going to, we did away with the old auto tech labs, and then now we have the up-to-date, state-of-the-art auto tech labs, for example, at Madison High School. The same students are in there together. One student may get out of high school and go directly into a job at a local garage. Another student may go to a technical school for one or two years at Volvo or Volkswagen and one of those places. And then the third student may go to university and study mechanical engineering. But we're not separating them out, and we're keeping the opportunities open for everybody because we want to increase the number of graduates and we want the graduation to be meaningful. So just basically, on the actual graduation rate, you can see here, a baseline, the first year, it was at 82%, and by 2014-15, we were up to 89%. Now, we have an asterisk next to the next year because that's the year we put in place the more rigorous requirements, and there were a lot of doomsday people who were saying, you know, "Kids are going to drop out, your graduation rate's going to go down," and so forth. And actually, there was a slight uptick that year in the graduation rate because we really began tracking what was going on for students and making sure they had what they needed to graduate. Now, I don't have the more recent numbers on here. In 2017 and '18, the calculation method by the state has changed. So once again, we can't compare the new numbers to the old numbers. I think the first year, the new numbers are not as high. When we did it by the old system, it was within about 1% of what we had had the previous year. But we'll start with a new baseline and work up from that because when it says about the students graduating, it says all students will graduate. So we're not satisfied with 90% of our students graduating. I remember Shirley Weber, Assemblywoman Shirley Weber, once saying, you know, "You don't want 75% of your mother, or father doesn't want 75% of their kids to succeed. We care about all the students." So in terms of graduation being meaningful, one way to measure this is, we have all students taking the college prep curriculum, but to meet the UC requirements, they have to have a C or better in every college prep course. And so, we began the program to move towards the new requirements in 2011. You can see at that point that there were about 44% of our graduates who were eligible to apply to UC and CSU. By 2017, with the more rigorous requirements, it's up to 77%. That's a pretty dramatic increase. But, looking below, just in the last couple of years, from 2015 to 2017, as we've transitioned to the new requirements, look at all the graduates increased by 24%, the number that mattered. But, among Hispanic graduates, 48%, among African-American graduates, 59%. This is what we're doing to close the achievement and the opportunity gap. Now, everybody says parents are very important. There's a lot of lip service to what's going on with parents and the educational experience of their child. But we're trying to look at how can parents be more effective in helping their students succeed in school and been working on high-impact home strategies. We don't have this in every school across the district, but there are resource teachers who are assisting the clusters and principals in terms of doing this. We've reached out in other ways. Power School gives parents more information about their student progress, their grades, and even our advisory groups of parents and others, we're having them come report to the Board of Education. That's another change during this time period on a quarterly basis as opposed to perhaps once a year. So what is most important probably, in terms of all of this, in what makes a difference in terms of student achievement, is the effective teaching in the classroom, the teacher having the most direct effect. We had professional learning communities before, but we have many, many more now. And these professional learning communities are when teachers of a grade level or a subject level get together and collaborate. It becomes a collective mission in terms of, we are responsible for all of the fifth graders in the school. We want them all to succeed. One teacher may be stronger in math, another stronger in English. They're sharing their ideas and bolstering up and supporting, and it also leads to better professional development as they identify what their needs are. But I think one of the biggest ones is the new growth and development model that we're developing for our teacher evaluations, replacing the old system of just a simple pass/fail system. What can we do to actually continuously improve the teaching? And this model is being developed cooperatively, collaboratively, by the district staff and the San Diego Education Association, so that we will figure out. You know, we have legislators, congresspeople, always wanting to come up with a teacher evaluation bill. You know, let's do 47% for the test scores and 23% for observations. That does nothing to improve teaching in the classroom. That's the whole goal, is to improve the teaching in the classroom. We've been doing this very carefully, slowly, so that, for example, we had a prototype, and now we're going to start pilots in certain schools. We're going to see what the rough spots are, and then as we smooth that out, we'll spread it across the district. And I really believe it's going to be a model for the entire nation to follow, rather than just waiting for someone to tell us how to do it. One of our goals was to make sure that we attract and retain the best teachers. Our HR staff and recruiters are saying, because we have improved our salaries, we're more competitive, we have the best benefits of anybody around. One thing that they said that really is helping to attract new graduates is our very rigorous induction program, a lot of support during the first two years of teaching. And, you know, I just think when you have a big city district, I'll make the comparison with the police department. A lot of people come in the police department, get trained by San Diego, and then move on to other districts, maybe other police departments that might pay better or something. Well, our teacher retention rate after five years, as you can see here, is 93%. That's well above the national average. Now, one of the goals we put here was we want the teaching staff to more closely match the diversity of our students, and we're not anywhere near there, and it's going to take a while to get there. But what we've done is create a teacher pipeline. The way to have the teaching staff match the diversity of the students is to have our students become the teachers. So we're identifying the students in high school who are really cut out to be teachers, and we're finding ways with the Community College District and the San Diego State to really support them all the way through school so that they can come back and teach in our own communities. Another line in this brochure, students will develop the ability to communicate in two languages. Well, by adopting the A to G standards, every student in high school takes at least two years of a world language. Many of them take more than that. And we've increased the number of immersion programs, where just like Language Academy was, had waiting lists, now we're opening a new immersion school at John Muir. Several elementary schools have dual-language programs. And on the language side, we also have our English learners. And so, for example, we looked at, we found out in 2013, that we had an inordinately high number of students who were in our district for a long time and had not become proficient in English. We call them long-term English learners if they've been in our district five years or more but have not yet been classified, reclassified as proficient in English. So in 2013, and I see, I reversed some numbers typo, it was 5,740. So, you might make sure you remember that statistic. That were long-term English learners, and by 2018, we had cut that number basically in half. So we're speeding up the rate at which students are becoming proficient. But we're also honoring the languages of all the 60 languages that our students come from. And in several of these languages, we have proficiency tests. So if they can demonstrate that they are proficient in their language, they can get their language credit through that. On the other hand, they can become bilingual. I talked with a young Mexican-American boy who is fluent in English and Spanish, and he's attending the Mandarin Chinese magnet, so he's going to be trilingual. Everybody knows about our technology program, that we have it in every classroom, devices for every student. We've also gotten to the point where some students are able to take their devices home, and this is a way to close the digital divide. And one example is having the teacher put the lesson on a video so the students can go home and play it and replay it, and then when they come back to class, they can get direct help from the teacher on that. We said we want schools to be safe, attractive, neighborhood centers. Okay, well, we passed Proposition S right at the beginning, and then Proposition Z. We've spent almost $2 billion to repair and renovate our facilities. There are about 58 new classroom buildings in the district. Write that down, Mike. It's not on the slide. And a couple hundred portables have been replaced or removed. But beyond, and, you know, there's wiring, there's plumbing. After decades and decades of neglect, we're just beginning to catch up on some of that. But you can see here, some of the other really important things we've done. There's been a big concern about safety. So we have communications equipment and ways that we reconfigure the entrances to the schools to make them safe from intruders. Solar panels in many schools across the district. In their first two phases, we're going to save about $3 million a year on our electrical bill besides reducing our carbon footprint. And one thing that's very popular for students who are sweating in the classroom is that by 2020, before 2020, we're going to have 100% air conditioning in every classroom in the district. And, for example, career tech, we're uniting the construction and the instruction. So, for example, we have 25 new career tech facilities. Broadcast journalism, auto tech, business, engineering, all types of facilities. Now, from the time we first adopted it, there's a few initiatives that we've added on since then. One of them is healthy start times, which, again, we're leading the state on this because the state hasn't caught up with us yet. But we have set a plan that by the fall of 2020, we will have healthy start times in all of our high schools, meaning that they will start at 8:30 or later. I already mentioned about the air conditioning. And another very ambitious goal was to have all our students in third grade proficient in reading and math by the third grade. And those students are now in second grade, so we have second grade and third grade for them to do that. Because what happened was, when we had the more rigorous requirements in high school, we said, "Okay, our juniors, are you ready to graduate? And what do we need to do to catch up?" And so, let's go back to 10th grade, 9th grade. And then we said, "Well, what's really going to have students on track is to be able to read by third grade." Because if a student is able to read in third grade, they're on track to graduate. If they're not able to read in third grade, they're not on track, and we need to do something about that. And just one more comment about the whole facilities thing, is we did this all with a project stabilization agreement. And what this did was it got our projects finished on time, under budget, a limited number of change orders, and the ratings, the audit ratings, both for the performance and the finance, are the highest rating possible for eight years in a row. And an added benefit is, we targeted, through this project stabilization agreement, the highest poverty zip codes in our district, of which we gained about 25% of the workers. And those are contributing to, those are the parents of our students that are actually, we're improving the economic situation as their kids are going to school. And because these bond programs last for many years, 10, 15 years in the future, we have students now who graduate from our schools who are working on those bond programs. Students that are in our high schools and below now will be able to work once they graduate on those programs. So, the class of 2020. We saw them earlier this evening. They're now juniors in high school. And basically, what we need to do is continue working on all the things we've been doing, but more of it. For example, we have some good parent engagement programs, but we need to spread them more widely across the district. Another challenge is maintaining our technology. We have the bond funds for buying the technology. It's a real challenge to have the staff we need to maintain them. I didn't mention before when I was talking about high schools, that one of the big changes is all the internships. We now have over 1,300 internships where students are actually participating in the real world as they're learning. And finally, the advocacy for full funding. The State of California Education Report, which came out in 2007, talked about the deficits. It just came out in the last week or so stating that there's a deficit of $22 billion in our funding for the basics of what we need in California. Quick math, 22 billion, the state is 300-some million for San Diego Unified, so we need to continue advocating for that. So as we move forward, we need to look back at Vision 2020 and see what might have been missing or what needs more work, and then we need to begin thinking about what we need to do to create a vision for 2030. And finally, so we dreamed big for 2020, and guess what? It's worked. We all perform better when we have high expectations. We did that when our juniors were in first grade. So now, this year, our first graders are going to graduate in the year 2030. So we need to do it again for them and see what we can continue to do to transform our district into a world-class system. And not a system that just has high averages, but a system that meets the needs of every single student that comes into our schools. And so, the motion we made was to recognize all the accomplishments of Vision 2020 and to direct ourselves, as a district, a board, a superintendent, and all of the stakeholders in the district, to begin talking about Vision 2030. We have the state again catching up with us with the Local Control Accountability Plan. We're already doing that through Vision 2020, but what that requires is that every three years, we come up with a plan and we review it each of those three years. What we're saying is we need a broader vision than that because if we hadn't looked ahead, we wouldn't have gotten where we got. I mean, just one example of changing the high school graduation requirements. We talked about that in 2011, but we need a lot of time to ramp that up. And so, it was 2016 was the first year that we did that. If we were just going If we were just going from one year to one year to the next, we wouldn't accomplish anything. And when we first set out to work on Vision 2020, I remember the day in 2008, after we were elected to the board, the reporters came to my house and said, what are you going to do about this $50 million this, the governor's going to cut from your budget? And it turned out that was nothing, because the next year was 100 million, and then 120, and on and on and on. And we could have just said, we had to hold the district together, and we could have said, this is just a pipe dream. But we said, we're going to still make this plan, because even if we were making cuts, we needed to know what our priorities were so we would keep the things intact that we need to keep intact. So that's the idea, and that's the plan. And I'm very excited about what we can potentially do for 2030 as we continue working on Vision 2020.
Great. Thank you very much for that report. We have a speaker on this item, Francine Maxwell.
While it's always good to review the progress of initiatives, the review must be authentic, meaningful, and not just glossy accolades for the superintendent and the board. Slide nine boasts a 12 percent increase to the number of students taking AP courses. Has there been a 12 percent increase in the number of students passing the AP test? Actually, in 2017, AP pass rate was the lowest in three years at 18 percent. So while you may be increasing the number of students enrolled in AP classes, the number of students passing the AP is actually decreasing. In slide number 16, you're still boasting about the 91.3 percent graduation rate for the class of 2016, even though it has been definitively shown that almost one-third of the class of 2016 left the district to attend charter schools, and a majority of those students were low-achieving African-American and Latino students. Even worse, while you cling to the 91 percent graduation rate, you fail to point out that only 63 percent actually met the A to G requirement. Your data presentations or claims are just disingenuous at best. And so I'm just saying that I can't wait for this to take, I guess Dr. Evans said that this presentation is going on the road, and so I can't wait to be in a meeting, whether it's PTA, whether it's North of Eight, and we cover all of this over again, because we will get more data to be able to refute almost everything there. Because in slide 10, the high school students enrolled in college classes was projected at 10,915 students, and I think in January 20, I think January 25th, North of Eight schools only got Black and Chicano studies. And all the students North of Eight, they got administrative justice, banking, finance, marketing. So we need to definitely look at that, because it's an equity issue.
Thank you very much for your comments. Board member, comments or questions on this item?
I'd just like to just make a couple of comments there first. In terms of the graduation rate, that is based on the state requirement in terms of how graduation was calculated. There's a new system now in place, and we will follow that system, and it has been verified and reverified that that's the rate. In terms of the issue, it's a very good point about AP courses. There's one thing to take a course, and it's another thing to pass the course. The reality is, and we can, and we can, this is sort of the tip of the iceberg, more students are passing AP classes. You could, if you have 50 percent of the students passing and you have 100 students taking it, okay, 50 students have passed. If you increase that to 200 students, and you only have, say, 45 percent of them passing, you have 90 students passing. So very clearly that the number of students passing AP courses has gone up at the same time. And I think it's very good to have dialogue about all of this. That's the whole point of this type of report card, to hold up what we had said we would do, and to really dig down in the numbers and find out exactly what's going on.
All right. Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Evans for this comprehensive report and presentation. It's an enormous amount of work to put this together, and I would also say that really since 2009, Dr. Evans has been the person who's taken the initiative to put 2020 into some coherent structure, and it's absolutely been, you know, the guide for this district now for over a decade. And so I just, again, Dr. Evans, thank you so much for the work that you've done. And I think what you're doing right now is incredibly important, because it is always critical that we kind of reflect back and say, you know, if we're going to claim to look out long-term and set a long-term vision, we've got to take stock of where we are on the path towards accomplishing that vision, and that's about holding ourselves accountable. And that's what Dr. Evans is helping us do tonight. But it's also, now as we all, I think, agree, it's time to embark on the next long-term vision, Vision 2030. You don't do that by starting with a blank slate. You do that by building on the work that you've been doing, that we've been doing now for a decade. What I would say about Vision 2020 is that Vision 2020, you know, sometimes people, when people think about a long-term vision statement, you tend to think of, you know, a lot of people getting into a room with, you know, sort of a big strategic planning process, and people putting dots on charts next to priorities and all those kinds of things. And we've done that from time to time over the last decade. But in reality, Vision 2020 was a description of work that had been going on in this district for years prior to 2009. So Vision 2020 wasn't an attempt to create something out of nothing. It was really an attempt by, you know, the board at the time to look at the work that was going on in our schools that we most valued, and we wanted to lift that work up and describe it as what we wanted to see for our entire district and for all students. Part of my, my ability to participate in the development of Vision 2020 came from having a chance to visit people like Cindy Martin, at the time, leading Central Elementary School, and so many other schools, and so many other efforts going on in our district, that, you know, and we've been honest about this in the past, work that I believe was going on in spite of the district, not because of the district. And in some cases, work that was going on despite significant obstacles set up by the district. So when we think about, for instance, the notion of a broad and challenging curriculum that includes science and art and career pathways, that kind of work 10 years ago required a lot of courage on the part of school leaders to put that curriculum together, because the emphasis from not only this district, but I think, you know, the emphasis of people across the state and across the country, was all about narrowing the curriculum to what could be measured in once-a-year standardized test scores in reading and math. That was what was considered, you know, sort of the foundation of education reform, not a broad and challenging curriculum. And so despite that emphasis coming, you know, from the top at this district and across the state and the country, we had very courageous leaders in our school communities that were developing a broad and challenging curriculum, that were focused on creating a positive climate and culture in the school, despite, you know, sort of reform notions that were all about turning people into competitors with each other. We had very courageous and innovative leaders in the schools who were positioning schools as the center, as the center of their neighborhoods and community, and engaging parents in a really deep and meaningful way. And we had leaders at schools, both principals and teachers and classified staff, who were coming together and working together and holding each other accountable to achieve high expectations for kids. And in the process, we saw, school after school after school in this district, achieving results, narrowing the achievement gap, doing the things that people at the top claimed that they believed in, but in fact, without really any evidence to show that their theories of school reform were, you know, were successful. Instead, what we learned, you know, I think through the process of developing Vision 2020 is that any challenge that we had in our district was being addressed and solved somewhere within our district. And we just saw this tonight, you know, with the Quality School Awards. Anything that we believe in that we're trying to achieve, we can find people in our district right now who are doing the kinds of things that we want our entire district to look like in 2030. So now, you know, I think Dr. Evans is calling on us to begin this process of developing Vision 2030. And I think what's so important is that as we develop Vision 2030, again, we honor the work that's going on already in so many of our schools, by so many of the people who are involved in our schools, our students, our parents, our teachers, our classified staff, our principals, our community partners, because that's where the answers are. Now, what we have also learned over the course of looking back 10 years is that challenges will come to this district that we cannot anticipate today. We could not anticipate when, as John was saying, when we ran for the board in 2008, that a couple of months later, we were going to be thrown into the greatest financial crisis in the history of California schools. We didn't anticipate that. We didn't anticipate that the challenge facing our families was going to get to the point where we see today, schools like Perkins Elementary with 35 percent of the kids who are homeless. And we talk about Perkins as an example, but we know full well that Perkins already, while maybe facing a higher level of intensity in the challenges that its students are facing, is not unique. And the trend that we know is that we would expect what we're seeing at Perkins to start happening at many schools in our district over the next several years. I think none of us, in reality, could have anticipated a federal government that's more interested in threatening our families than supporting our families. And so, you know, we think of all the challenges that we have faced over the last 10 years. We don't know what those challenges are going to look like in the next 10 years or the next 12 years, but we know they're going to be deep and are going to, and are going to challenge our core and our ability to keep focused on a long-term strategy. But as John said, if we, as a community, come together and honor the work, you know, Cindy had talked about from the beginning when she took over as superintendent, of a process called appreciative inquiry. The process of learning what we already are doing that's working, learning in some cases of kind of these positive outliers, where people are doing things despite, you know, the circumstances that people are facing. And so I hope we use an appreciative approach as we go through, you know, the process of creating Vision 2030. And we already know that people are chomping at the bit to get at this. We've got community partners already from the Hoover-Crawford Cluster that already are sitting at the table with us and wanting to throw themselves into the development of Vision 2030. We know that we've got people in the Perkins community who are ready to go. We want to talk about, you know, creating Vision 2030. And we also know that when we talk about a long-term vision by 2030, we're not talking about coming up with a plan this year that will be implemented 12 years from now. What we know is what we're doing is creating a guide for where we want to be, that we have to make progress on every year going forward. It's a, it's a, it's a process that we need to get better and better and closer and closer, you know, towards our long-term vision. So I'm very confident that this community has people in place that, number one, are already at that level that we want to be as an entire district in 2030, that we can learn from, that we can be inspired by, and that are ready to come together and work to create this vision. And it's time to go. And 12 years from now, none of the people sitting up at this dais might be here, a whole different group of people. All the people sitting in the auditorium today might not be here. But I think what we can do is we can engage this community in a conversation about what our core deepest values are and what our greatest aspirations are. And we know that when we stick to it despite whatever challenges come that we can and can't anticipate, we can make real progress. So again, thank you, Dr. Evans.
Dr. White, your Spain?
I know that it was a lot of work, and thank you for putting that together. I support us looking towards the future, 2030. But I sit here tonight, and I'm challenging my schools, I'm challenging the system to, let's not wait for 2030, let's finish 2020. At the Lincoln Cluster Meeting last week, or whenever we had it, I said to the group that it feels like we're kind of going through quicksand, and I want us to soar. We can't afford inching up, we'll improve by a couple of points or just by a few things. We have to really scale it up big time. You said something very important, which is that we have some elements of things in the community that are working, and we must share them, we must get involved, like we were talking about the DEEP program and so on. We've got to do it. These children that we're talking to now will not be here 2030. A lot of them are going on through the system. And my issue always has been, let's not say, at the high school level, I can't do because the middle school didn't do, and the middle school's not doing, so elementary school is a problem, and elementary can't do it because the parents are the problem, and on and on and on. When you look at hospitals, when somebody goes in sick, and you go to the emergency room, they don't say, I can't work on you because your mother didn't do this, or your brother, your cousin, or whatever. They look at that person and they say, what can we do to get the job done? And that's the way we have to be about it for some of my schools. I don't know about the rest of you, you're doing fine maybe, and so on. But for my school, we absolutely must say, these children sit here before me, and I've got to do something, whether they're in high school, whether they're in elementary, wherever they are. It's got to be all hands on deck. And that's why I'm excited about what I saw at Johnson, because I think that message is there, that the principal understands that everything has to come together. The community, they're looking down at the school, it sits up, the houses sit up, and they're looking down at what's happening on that campus. If somebody breaks in, somebody does whatever, they're checking out the playground, they know, they're engaged, they call the principal. It's their responsibility to let the school know, I'm happy or I'm unhappy about what's going on. If, and now the principal's been trying to get parents and grandparents to come and walk in the morning and participate in the exercise around the track. So you walk there, and we saw just a lot of folks walking around the children before school starts. You see, the grant that the school was given, they have ideas and plans about how they can use it. The retired folks on that campus, the retired teacher, they're engaged, they know that primetime has to be involved before and after school, and it must be connected in a way that will impact those children today, not in 12 years or not in two years, but right now. And that urgency, I want all of my schools, all of the schools in the district to feel, every teacher, every employee, every parent, even, we saw Siemens last- Even, we saw Siemens last week, and we said to them, you've got to do more, you've got to help us, we've got to engage all the partners, VAPA, whatever it is, we've got to do it, it's up to us now, John, not 2030, but now. We've got to get involved and do the things that we know how to do to ensure that every child is maximizing his or her potential. Am I making sense?
Yeah, and I would just reiterate what Trustee Barrera said, which was, when we're talking about 2020 and we're talking about 2030, we're not talking about something happening in 2020 and 2030. We're talking about continuously working on that every single year.
Every day, every day.
One example is that what we said a couple of years ago about K-3 literacy. We made a very ambitious goal. I mean, we made a goal for high school, all students will graduate. We haven't met that goal. I mean, we still have a lot of students who are left out. I mean, we've improved, but we have a long ways to go. The K-3 literacy was very ambitious because, you know, when we have, you know, various test scores and so forth, where about half the students are proficient to say, and just a few years, we're going to get those students up to proficient. But just like with the passion you're talking about, we need to make sure that those students this year in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade are on the track to being proficient in reading by third grade. And what we know now is there have been, what Richard was talking about, is we've seen some people doing it, the resource teachers have gone in and they've said, let's find the two lowest performing students in the class, and what can we do to get them at proficient level, and having them work with the teachers on that. The issue is scaling it up. Now, we could say, okay, let's have a 3% increase every year, and I used to see when we first got on the board, all kinds of just arbitrary percentages and so forth. We said, we want all of our students proficient in reading by third grade, and so we are going to hold ourselves accountable, just like with the high school graduation rate. We want all of our students to graduate with a meaningful diploma. We haven't reached it, but we've gotten a lot further along the way. Do I think that we are going to have 100.0% proficient in reading by the end of next school year? That may not be possible, but we're going to get as close to that as we can get. And it's what you're saying, every child, every day. So if we were just focusing on that alone, well, you know, because we're always looking at all the remedial programs in middle school and high school, and kids, you know, getting to a certain grade level that are illiterate and so forth, and what can we do to provide them with support? What if we had them proficient in reading by third grade? Another example, I went through this like a reporter, and I know the superintendent was, when she was talking to me, that I came across maybe negative or cynical in terms of, well, you haven't done anything on this, you haven't done anything on that. I'll take the parent engagement programs. We don't have, across the district, every parent understanding and closely involved in the improvement of their child's education, what they can do at home. But we have these high-impact home strategies, and they have been working with some parents at a few schools, and it's making a difference. So the question is, how do we scale that up? And I think what Richard was saying too about appreciative inquiry, and I understand, you know, the comment from the public and from many other people, oh, you're just rah rah rah, patting yourself on the back. But this is the way to make progress. Find out what's working and do more of it, you know, rather than invent a completely new way, we're going to throw out what we've been doing and just do things completely differently. That's why there's this whole seesaw effect in so many districts. So you're right, it's every day, every child, every student. And it's bold to hold ourselves accountable, because when we're saying right now, we want all of our students to be proficient in reading by third grade, we're going to have to look at that and answer that, and if we don't make it, we're going to have to say, what else do we need to do to make it happen?
Dr. McQuarrie?
Yeah, so much could be said, and so much has already been said, but that was an incredible piece of work. I know we're highlighting our strengths, but we also know that we have lots of work to do. But for you and Richard, who started in 2008, to come out of that dark abyss and to be able to come up with a vision, you know, a bright star, you know, a north star, a Vision 2020 that could give us hope and direction as a community, as a city of schools. And then, being able then to get the 12 indicators, which is, I think, is what you're referring to as your plan, and then with that, then hiring a superintendent who could do the work, kind of like an admiral of a fleet, of an armada. So I know all of our shifts in this particular group, heading towards that, being guided by that Vision 2020 and with an admiral, and with many ships of many different sizes, with different crews and a different makeup and different structures, of course, some are out further ahead than others, and some are behind. What we do is kind of, we do an average, and we talk about the average of where all of these are in this journey that we are on. And yes, we want to talk about the average score, where are we in general, where are our best schools and where are our best students? But I think with the LCAP and the Local Control Funding Formula, that gave us a way of talking about where we are going collectively. We took those 12 indicators, and I think we brought them down to eight, and then it settled on six. And so now, we have a real clear set of goals that we all can go towards. So it's every school, every child, every day, in every classroom can make progress across these six major goals. And we're able to, with the, I think the LCAP allowed us then to make some of the difficult choices we needed to make in terms of finding a $124 million solution. I can't imagine how this district would have done that without having this very comprehensive plan that was put together with great leadership and then using a vision that was unifying. But we were able to do that, and we were able to do that in a year that we had the class of 2016 score above the 91st percentile. So yes, we made some major cuts, and we were able to do that without losing the, our progress we were making academically. The challenge now, and I think this is what we're doing tonight, is to take this opportunity to reflect back. Let's take a look through the appreciative lens at what we have done well, and let's also not forget that we have much more work to do in areas that are of concern. But we can take the combination of those looking forward, and as we build the Vision 2030, I think we want to bring what has been, I think, a strength and as well as an indicator of our progress, bringing our stakeholders together, reaching out to our business and community leaders to help us create a local control accountability plan, a plan that closer reflected the interests of our community, took the professional knowledge and experience and skills of our staff, blended it with the hopes of our parents, and then utilized and reached out to the partnership with our businesses to come together with a plan with objectives and activities that would move us forward. So yes, we're not going to be creating something brand new. As you didn't create anything totally new, you took the best of what we had in 2010, '11, and '12. And I remember sitting in those meetings in 2014, as we were beginning, we built our first local control accountability plan, and it was more of a top-down plan. And as we went through the revision of that each year, it became more of a community-out plan, and became very much more of a collaborative effort, and I think that we've made some strong progress in that area to become far more transparent, more accountable, more diverse measures of outcomes, and I think we've been able to use those outcomes to identify our weaknesses and our strengths. And I think as we move forward in looking at the 2030, what I liked in the resolution is the therefore. It's the therefore, as a district, we'll begin a school and community input process in the period leading up to the 2020 that will determine the needs of our students under a new updated vision of 2030. So, which will serve as a long-term accountability plan for the district in the next decade. So I think reaching out to our community and our schools in this process, and we'll have a quality 2030 vision if we have a quality input process. So I want to commend you for the report that you've done, it allows us to reflect on both the strengths and our needs, and it does give us the firm foundation for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for all the board comments. One thing I did want to mention to Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Payne is you had said, you had talked about your schools, and you were concerned that whether or not we were seeing the same things in our schools. But I just want you to know that your schools are my schools too, and I will continue, as I have for many years, to do everything we can to allocate the resources to the schools with the highest need, and to make sure that we lift all of our children up at every level so that they can all have that opportunity and access to higher education or a career program to be contributing members back to our society. So this is an action item. I do want to thank Dr. Evans for all your work putting this report together and for presenting it. It's a huge feat, and serving on the board with you the last eight years has been very inspiring.
Thank you.
You want to comment some more? Go ahead.
I mean...
I don't have school tomorrow, so go for it.
I know that.
I do.
Well, we skipped some meetings, so you're okay. But I do believe that, you understand that about our, I mean, not just my schools, but I'm a little bit passionate about that piece of it, but it's our, they are all our schools. I have forgotten to say about the AP. We are looking at that at Crawford, there was an issue from the students about the AP and the fact that in one class, we had only five out of the 40 to actually pass. Should they be in a college class where they can get the credit rather than, I mean, in there getting college-level teachers, et cetera? So we may want to look at that somewhere down the road.
Yeah, very good. This is an action item, so please vote. And that passes unanimously. On to item H2, which is a public hearing and an action item. This is the public hearing and adoption of district's initial proposal to the San Diego Schools Police Officers Association, POA, to bargain a successor agreement. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Dr. Evans, is there a second? Second from Dr. McQuarrie. We do have one person speaking on this item, Francine Maxwell, you have two minutes.
The word "safety" has been tossed around all night. I think we're preparing ourselves to get ready for that bond measure fight that we're going to have. As a community member, I'm wondering why the police that are short-staffed right now have 14 unpaid furlough days, but you let your one employee give her girlfriends a whole bunch of raises as we're in the budget crisis. I think the last raise I saw was maybe $60,000 to maybe three people. So I'm just wondering why we would have the police that are already short-staffed have 14 unpaid days? And then also, the fact that everyone was talking so much safety tonight. We had an issue in District E where some adults came on campus to fight children, and the area superintendent was there, and it was amazing because he came out of his meeting, but he didn't intervene. So how important is it for safety when your area superintendent doesn't help intervene? It's on film, and he went back in the meeting room that he was. And so I'm just, I want us to be cognizant when someone wants to sit and talk about that they're so concerned about safety, because immediately, there should have been a meeting called to strategize on how come that happened on that campus in District E, because it's something that's been reoccurring. It's an issue from last school year with these parents, and there has not been a strategy meeting with our chief of police, Chief Marquez. It hasn't been a strategy meeting with prominent community members to shut it down, and it hasn't been a meeting with the security guards who like to leave the back gate open when we're getting food deliveries and everything else, because it's really easy to get through the back gate. So I just want to support the police, and I'm hoping that you don't have the 14 unpaid furlough days, because you have money, and you know that you have money. So let's go ahead and pay them and get them out. We have them extremely stretched, way too thin.
Thank you. We have a motion, and on the floor, please vote. That passes unanimously. Now we leapfrog up to item H6, the Learning Choice Academy, action on revision to the charter petition to add a location. This is an action item, is there a motion?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Dr. Evans, is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Barrera seconds the item. Any comments or questions, please? Trustee Barrera?
Sorry, President Advisor, is Deidre, oh yeah, Deidre's still here, yeah. Deidre, could you just tell, basically, two questions. Where is the new location, and what potential impact is their moving into new location going to have on other schools in the area?
So the new location is Phyllis Place. It's in the Murphy Canyon area, and it's a replacement site for the La Mesa site that we removed from the charter at the end of June. So this is the replacement site within our boundaries. The impact, we're projecting it to be not significant to current district students. There, it's the students that were at the La Mesa site...
Got it.
...that will make up the enrollment at the site primarily.
Thank you, great, thanks.
All right, we have a speaker, Kamal Martin, you have two minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any board member comments or questions? Dr. McQuarrie?
I understand the move is because they want to comply with our lawsuit?
It is to become compliant with the Charter Schools Act.
Right.
And so, if you are a non-classroom-based program, you must operate within your authorizer's boundaries. You can have one site in an adjacent county, which they do, in Temecula, but the La Mesa site was outside of our boundaries, so now they will be compliant with Charter School Act, and the sites under our petition, there will be two within our boundaries.
It was kind of like, like the University of the National University, they were chartered by, and outside, and then they moved inside and were chartered by us. This one here is, they were actually chartered by us, but they were located outside, and they're just coming back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And you've been watching them, and we have a good, solid indication of where they are?
Yes, they have been chartered through us for a number of years. They're actually going to be coming up to us within this school year for renewal of the charter, and so we've had favorable reviews in the past for the Charter School.
All right, so unlike the Thrive situation, we know this charter.
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, please vote. That passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to district operations. Fiscal year 2017-18 unaudited actuals, financial report in standardized account code structures, or SACS, series form. This is in compliance with Education Code Section 42100. This is an action item, is there a motion?
Still moved.
The motion is by Trustee Barrera, seconded by Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Superintendent Martin and Dr. Ottinger, please present the item.
Thank you, President Advisor.
Good evening, President Advisor, Vice President Whitehurst Payne, Superintendent Martin, members of the board. The purpose of this presentation is to update the board and the public on the 17-18 fiscal Tonight, we'll be seeking your approval on these unaudited actuals so that they can be sent to the San Diego County Office of Education. You'll notice on the timeline that we have passed the date, however, to be in compliance, we notified the San Diego County Office of Education of this board meeting, and that we'd be seeking your approval, and so they are aware, and they have the files, so all is ready to go pending approval. So we will be recommending to you to approve this and move it forward. As a very high-level overview, here's a snapshot of the budget development timeline and our current placement in September. In terms of the fiscal report, we'll be providing comparative data and noting some final adjustments that occur between the board's final budget adoption and the state's final budget. You may recall that the state's final budget this past year was finalized after this board took action, so there were some adjustments that we're going to call out for you as well. This slide summarizes the general fund unrestricted. In blue, in the middle, you'll notice a $8.227 million ending balance. This was... This was partially due to an increase in general fund interest and also additional revenue in early childhood education and a moderate decrease in some of the costs with special education. This leads to the $8.227 million ending balance.
Kurt, when you say interest, do you mean the interest that we're already having?
Yes, that's correct. So with the $8.227 million, we wanted to call out and break it out for you that $1.1 million of that is Civic Center carryover. So that is, those are monies with the Civic Center Act that are carried over. They are at the school site's discretion and those are realistically not available to the central office. That's carryover. There's some other miscellaneous pieces. I also wanted to call our attention to an explanation of the $6.4, roughly $6.4 million in what appears to be carryover. All of those funds are allocated for expenses that are expected or encumbered in the 1819 year, and some of those big categories include a $3 million shortfall, as I mentioned, between, not the district shortfall, but the shortfall between the May revise from the governor's office and the enacted budget. We had $3 million less of one-time funds. So that $3 million accounts within that $6 million. We also have a variety of other, a variety of other funds, including election costs and also reinstatement of paras and other staffing, these things that occurred since the budget was adopted. We also have some funds encumbered for potential legal settlements and others. So all of those told roll up to $8.227 million, which we are sharing with you. Those are all accounted for in the 1819 year, and our recommendation is we continue to keep them as part of the 1819 year. This slide covers the GASB, or Government Accounting Standards Board 68, which shows that we are properly accounting for the payments to the state teachers' retirement system. We account for it because we never actually see those funds ourselves. That's a pass-through from the state to STIRS. Nevertheless, we do need to account for the expenditure and the revenue, and so that's why you're seeing on the far-right column, you're seeing it zero.
But this is all our pension payment? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which is they don't give it to us, so we pay it back?
This is a payment, this is a payment for STIRS. It's just, they do not actually give us the funds directly. The state pays STIRS. However, we do account for it in our unaudited actuals.
What happens with PERS? Does that go through us?
It does, but that's different than the GASB 68 process.
Okay.
This leads us to a breakdown of the 1819 amended budget, including the LCFF sources, which increased about $6.5 million in 1819 and 1920 due to a higher level of LCFF. However, as mentioned, at the same time, our one-time state revenues decreased between May and adopted, so that accounting is in this chart. And frankly, this is an end-of-the-year review, which the next steps will be, all of our accounting will be sent to our external auditors. They will review, and that will change from unaudited actuals to then audited actuals, which we will bring back to the Board of Education for review in December. Which frankly leads us to our recommendation to you and questions and assurances that we are complying with GAAP and GASB and all of the appropriate regulations that were mentioned earlier. So at this point, we have our recommended action, and I look forward to feeling questions from the board.
Okay, we do have a speaker on this item, Francine Maxwell. You have two minutes.
Speaker of the state.
Okay, I understand. A board member comments or questions? Okay, this is an action item. Did everybody vote?
It was turned on already.
Okay, could you clear the, thank you. That's what I had thought. That motion passes 5-0. We now move on to the superintendent's consent agenda, where we'll hear a variety of items that were pulled. So let's go ahead and take a look at items J1, 6, 10, 13, 19, 29, 38, 31, 32, and 36. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from trustee Barrera. Is there a second?
So moved.
We have a second from Dr. Evans. We have a speaker on seven items, Francine Maxwell. Is seven minutes enough to cover the seven items?
Give me four.
Okay, you have five minutes.
We're going to cut out some of this. On J6, I was just trying to question how these grant funds were used is just a little bit different for me to find when I was looking in. Page 16, Exhibit B on the contract shows that three district employees are receiving salary and fringe benefits. Escobedo, 42K, Solo, 36, Moreno, 19. Are these payments to employees in addition to their district salaries? Exactly how does the leadership tracking effort connect to the LCAP goal 3.1A and the district commitment to recruit staff who reflect the diverse backgrounds of the student population? This diversity goal is not mentioned at all in this ratification. Question number three is Escobedo. The former principal of Lee Elementary, I guess you think that we forgot that in 2013, the police found a loaded pistol, four small bags of meth, 22 hydrocodone pills, marijuana, and open bottle of vodka in the car. I'm not exactly sure what role will be coordinating this leadership tracking project, but I'm certain that there are better examples of leadership in this district. We'll skip over to J29, the ratification of Nelson Murphy Advertising and Public Relations. So Tony already received $25,000. You want to give him another $50,000. So now we're going to pay him $50,000 for professional communication services district-wide. What's wrong with the district's Department of Communication? Does the $245,000 that Andrew Sharp earned in 2017 not cover what we need to do in communications? I'm just a little concerned at the way that we continually throw around this money. I think that I did J10. Okay, it's already started this year. Exactly what are the data points from the previous year? What are the demographics of the students that have participated in this program and are currently in the program? As many of these items on the superintendent's consent agenda, they are approved by the board with absolutely no data presented. We have no idea at all how the program is doing, yet we are willing to throw another $10,000. It's okay. It's not coming from anybody's personal check. Lastly, I wanted the board to, see, as you stated tonight, Kevin, that you care about all children. As I was at the back-to-school night at Morris High School, a special ed teacher said, due to the pressure, she immediately, this year, we're only five weeks in, she switched over 10 students to non-diploma-bound because of the pressure. Another brand-new special ed teacher stated that she walked in to Morris High School with 10 overdue IEPs. So that meant that the special ed teachers that were at Morris High School last year, they didn't do those IEPs and nor did the students get their needed services. So I'm just wondering, still walking around, I'm listening to teachers talk, another teacher informed me that is still working at Morris, that changed a large number of her caseload. She says that she can't get to the 20 people on her caseload because she doesn't have time. She would have to send over 200 emails so that she can find out what these students are doing. So I'm asking you, in the interest of safety and equity, that you open up an investigation to the leader that's in special ed and they do an immediate, immediate deep dive of the students that are in special ed that have been labeled non-diploma-bound now. Not to have to earn a high school diploma because your teacher doesn't have time to do her job and still collects a paycheck. Again, I ask you, what is the directive from the administration at Morris High School? If you do your work, just click non-diploma-bound box. Really? Another special ed teacher came that she was, the administration took away her period to do the IEPs. So I'd like for the person to be able to come back and do a presentation on that, or we can see her at the Morris Cluster Meeting, which should be meeting on October 17th at Boone Elementary. How are the teachers expected to monitor the process, the progress of their students without time during the day? The teacher said that the administration at Morris has taken that away. What is going on with the struggling students at Morris High School? The lack of professionalism, ethics, major concern to me, and I saw this firsthand as I walked around back-to-school night. Something must be done immediately for our children. I'm wondering, are there other students with the same concern that I did not hear about? I would guess the answer would be yes. Something must be done, or the legal team is going to have more work than they have employees to handle all the lawsuits. And so I think that we've all been charged to do better, and I'll sign up for that to do better also.
Citizen, you submitted slips on item J29, 31, 32, and 36. It's four items. Is four minutes enough?
I think five minutes.
Five, you have five minutes.
So you're not good stewards of our money. I'm looking at this contract for Metalotus, Nelson Murphy Advertising and PR, and I have to tell you, you've got a lot of people working in your PR department, a lot of people, and they're constantly cranking out stuff. It's like you guys just have to keep sending out press releases to find yourself some good publicity. And that shouldn't be necessary for a public school. You should be working on your jobs. And you should certainly be worrying about the money. You have 1,500 fewer students this year, K-12 students. You guys have a decrease in enrollment, and you need to watch every penny. This is a luxury, having a little PR contract, especially with all the people that you pay in the communications office. And then let's look at the other issues. The parks that you guys want to build, okay? Now you want another measure. You want more money. And you're telling everybody that you're concerned about the plumbing, and you're concerned about the asbestos, and you're concerned about the air conditioning, and you're concerned about all these filthy bathrooms. But you're spending $1.8 million for a city park at Gage, and a million in another school, and $2 million in another school. Your job isn't to build parks. That is not why people approve Prop S and Prop Z. You guys promised to fix the electrical. You guys promised to have fire safety schools. One of the schools that you found had a fire safety wall that only went up to the ceiling, not up to the real ceiling, up to the fake suspended ceiling. You haven't gotten to that, and you're building parks for the city. Why? Because Barrera over here thinks all this money is Barrera bucks. And Barrera has friends at the city that he wants to make happy. So I want Mike McQuarrie and Kevin Beiser and Sharon Whitehurst Payne and John Lee Evans to please think for yourselves. Does it make sense to build a park when you're telling the public that your kids are drinking water with lead in it? You need to change the priorities of the next $2 billion that you spend because you didn't tell the people you were going to build parks so the city could be happy. You told the people you were going to fix the schools so you could bring them up to the 21st century, and you're not doing it. So people are being asked for bond measure, why? Why? And it's nothing but another checkbook for Richard Barrera and his union buddies. That's what it is. And you're cheating and you're stealing from the kids. Instead of giving them the things that they need, you're giving them parks. Come on. Let's focus on the things that are not fancy, like electrical, like fire safety, like asbestos. You founded Encanto. How many more places have it? But you haven't gotten there because you've been busy worrying about building pools and building parks. Parks are a city issue, not a school/district education issue.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes. We are adjourned. Our next regular meeting will be held Tuesday, October 9th at 5:00 PM. We are adjourned.